I think that fits within the parameters of permissible personal reason for remote participation pursuant to our bylaws. So therefore, I would move that the Planning Commission approve electronic participation by Commissioner Coman in this meeting for those personal reasons, as she stated, pursuant to our policy for electronic participation.
And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Trainer, would you like to take your role? Vote?
Yeah, Ms. Friedlander?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Pointe?
Yes.
And Mr. Hyrum?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, we can move on to adoption of the agenda. Given the cancellation of our meeting a couple of weeks ago, our agenda is quite a bit fuller tonight than it might have been, so we'll see if we can work our way through. One of the items on 7B and 7C, we may decide when we get there to defer that to future meeting, but we'll see how things go. Would someone like to, unless there's any questions or comments on the agenda, would someone like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move that we adopt it as it was printed. Yeah, I think it's a full agenda, but it's laid out logically. We'll do our best to stay on track, I suppose. So I'll move that we adopt it as it was published.
And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the agenda is adopted. Okay, well, one of the items that we have on the agenda this evening is the Preliminary Board and Commission Workshop for the Quinn Homestretch Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Special Exception. So a couple of things by way of introduction. First of all, I want to welcome any members of Boards and Commission who might be here. We'll see at the time as to whether or not anyone actually is here. Tonight's session, I view it as an opportunity to informally learn about a project directly from the developer at an earlier stage in the public review process than is normally the case. We'll start with comments from staff and the developer, and then that'll be followed by questions and comments from any Board and Commission members who might be present. And then finally, we'll open it up to members of the Planning Commission for any questions and comments that they might have. We won't be taking public comments on this item this evening. There was a written comment submitted earlier, and that will become part of our record. So I view the point of this evening is that we're in an early stage in the public comment process, and tonight is information sharing and communication of early thoughts of individual members of both Planning Commission and Boards and Commissions as we prepare for our advisory role to the City Council, who is the decision-maker on the special exception. And so with that, Mr. Stoddard, are there any comments that you'd like to make?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Stevens. So as you mentioned, this is early in the process for this application review, and tonight's session is billed as a Preliminary Board and Commission Workshop. This is a model that we piloted with two prior applications that came in. The idea is before the application is sort of resubmitted, so in its earliest stages, prior to even a council formal referral out to the Boards and Commissions, have an opportunity for the applicants to come and make a presentation to the Planning Commission, representatives from other Boards and Commissions, make sure we've got the right information up on the project website, so that really in between those first and second submittals, when there's the greatest opportunity for change and flexibility, the applicant has the benefit of input from staff, council, Planning Commission, Boards and Commissions, so that we can get the most complete revisions possible between those two submittals. So that is the purpose of tonight's meeting. We have Laura Arseneau, who's our case planner on the project. She has about a five or 10-minute presentation prepared to walk through the basics of the application and the early stages of staff review, and then we can turn it over to the applicant for approximately 20 to 25-minute presentation.
Very good. I'll just note that Commissioner Weiss has joined us. Ms. Arseneau, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Stoddard, Commissioners. My name is Laura Arseneau, and I'm a principal planner with Planning and Zoning in the Case Planner for this mixed-use application. Also here tonight is Henry Zhang, Principal Planner and Deputy Director, he's not here. Mr. Gary Fuller is a deputy director, and along with myself are the project team for this application. I'm here tonight to present a brief summary of the Quinn Homestretch Redevelopment Proposal. Staff has completed an initial review, and the Planning Commission and representatives for Boards and Commission are requested to provide feedback on the first submission of this application. A summary of the application begins on line 22 of the report. The applicant, Quinn Enterprises LLC, is proposing a 10-story mixed-use building with a maximum height of 115 feet comprised of the following uses and site amenities: 226 multifamily residential units, including independent living units, assisted living units, and memory care units; approximately 36,000 square feet of business and professional office with medical and dental; 10,000, approximately 10,000 square feet of ground-floor retail and service establishment; 5,600 square feet of restaurant; a civic nonprofit space; new publicly accessible open space; a partially underground parking garage with 292 parking spaces; and a LEED gold certification for the building. The applicant also provided draft voluntary concessions with the submission in an architectural viewbook with preliminary building and site designs. Staff has analyzed the submission and specifically provides a comparison of the proposed voluntary concessions with the concessions of recently-approved applications and an attachment to the staff report. Excuse me. Starting on line 33, the location, the 1.86-acre site, is comprised of three existing parcels located at 350 and 360 South Washington Street and 303 South Maple Avenue. There are three land use actions needed with this application, and they include: First, a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use map designation of Lot 27, 360 South Washington, from business to mixed use. Second, a special exception to allow residential use to be within a mixed-use development. And third, a special exception to allow increase in building height from a maximum of 75 feet up to 115 feet. Additional required actions include: A waiver for the required 100-foot distance from commercial vehicular entrance or exit to an R district; a required parking modification with the reduction requested of 22 percent; an easement agreement between the developer and the city for the West Fairfax Greenway-Rolling Road Park maintenance; and an easement agreement between the developer and the city as the proposed Greenway Street, I'm sorry, the West Fairfax Street as proposed Greenway Street for pedestrian and cyclists. Additional items that are pending include: A landscape conceptual plan, a transportation impact analysis, a transportation demand management and parking plan, a parking reduction study, detailed architectural elevations, and a shadow study. Staff conducted preliminary analysis on the comprehensive plan, and the proposed project is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommendations in the South Washington Street Small Area Plan. Staff also reviewed special exception primary and secondary criteria analysis. Staff completed this analysis against the criteria, including consistency with the comprehensive plan, the small area plan, design guidelines, and overall benefit to the city. Staff will continue to work with the applicant on developing voluntary concessions to address these criteria. Additionally, staff reviewed the parking proposal against city parking regulations. The zoning code requires a total of 371 spaces for the mix of proposed uses. The applicant is proposing 292 spaces. The total requested parking reduction is 79 spaces, or 22 percent overall. The final mix of uses, residential uses and parking spaces, will be further reviewed by the Planning Commission during site plan review, which will require finalization of the transportation demand management study and parking management plans. Lastly, in the fiscal impact, according to the methodology used in recent special exception project evaluations, the projected annual net fiscal impact is $903,753,000, or $485,888 per acre. Not counting for changes in real estate taxes, previously constructed mixed-use projects have provided an annual per acre net fiscal impacts ranging from negative $86,000 to positive $452,000. As for timing and scheduling moving forward on the application, the first submission was sent in on March 3, 2023. The City Council Work Session was last week on April 10. Tonight, we're here, April 19. We're looking for a future submission in May 2023, and City Council Work Session and referral to Boards and Commissions are pending. Thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant will have a short presentation.
Very good. Before we turn it over to the developer, are there any questions for Ms. Arseneau from Planning Commission members? We'll off on that then. Mr. Painter, I see you out there. I believe you'll be speaking on behalf of the developer.
While he's getting that going, good evening. My name is Andrew Painter. I'm a zoning attorney at the law firm of Walsh Calucci, speaking tonight on behalf of the applicant, which is Quinn Enterprises LLC. We are very excited to be here tonight. This project has been a long time coming for the Quinn family. It's been talked about in the city for a number of years, and we appreciate the efforts the staff has made to sort of have this sort of be a test run for having early input from Boards and Commissions and from the Planning Commission, sort of daylighting this upfront, because usually, the first time that Planning Commission sees it is much later in the process. We wanted to put our best foot forward with our application, with our submission. We tried to think critically about a variety of issues. We submitted voluntary concessions with our initial submission, which is not typically done upfront. It's usually in response to the first round of staff comments, but we wanted to put our best foot forward. Despite the amount of time that has gone into this, getting here this evening and submitting the actual application, the project is in its infancy. We do look forward to what will be a lengthy, you know, citizen review period. And before I go into my actual presentation, I wanted to recognize Paul Quinn. Mr. Quinn has been sort of the driving force behind this project, not just in making it, you know, come to sort of fruition and getting the application going, but providing the vision for it. So I'd actually like to, with your indulgence, invite him up to just say a couple of words.
Sure.
Paul? Right here is fine. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Paul Quinn. I live at 712 Parker Avenue. My wife, Catherine Garhart Quinn, on her behalf, I am here also, although she is not with us here tonight. We have been working with our parcels there on South Maple and South Washington Street for a number of years. Currently, they house our auction business, and we knew when we bought the buildings that we would be looking for some sort of eventually a mixed use consistent with what plans the city was having and was evolving in that process. That's been a long process from lots of developers wanting to buy the properties, and it just never worked out. Never worked out. I'm getting older, and it's still not working out. And then about a year ago, the staff suggested that Andrew Teeters, who was looking at properties here in the city, come and talk to us, because the developer we had was not able to meet the requirements that they felt they needed to develop. Andrew came along, and we worked well with him and his group. There was a change in the fall that required some additional adjustments that allowed Kathy and I to get more involved in this process, and we are excited, as council has indicated, to be here. We launched last week with the council, but we really launched tonight, because what you folks are doing is so important to getting the project that this will be best for the city. The council can approve it, but you fight the battles, and you look at all the details. And having sat on this board some 25, 30 years ago, I appreciate what it is that you are doing. My wife is Catherine Garhart Quinn. She came to Falls Church 75 years ago as a three-year-old. Her family moved from Pennsylvania, her father having come back from the war, got a degree in mathematics, took a job with Fairfax County, and they moved from Western Pennsylvania here. Forty-five of our 52 years of marriage, we have been here in the city of Falls Church. This is our home. I can drive Kathy around town, and she can tell me more than even the history books, I think, can tell us about what was where and when it came. So it's a passionate project for us, if you will. When the city referred Andrew Teeters to us, we were very pleased, and we are delighted. The team we have, we are so proud of them, and we look forward to the work, not only presenting you with the work that they have done so far, but continuing to maintain that kind of an approach as we go forward. The project basically is single-phase, mixed-use, in an area of town that we think needs to be probably brought up to where we would like it to be, or where it might possibly be. We need a place to live. Kathy and I are getting old, and we are elected to, with all of the developers that we have worked with, to talk about a space for seniors. And this project will show you a space for folks with memory issues, folks needing skilled nursing care, as well as individuals who are downsizing, if you will, and in an independent living mode. We also have within the building of mixed use, we have an opportunity for restaurants, food plans, medical office, parking below grade. We wanted to have a project, a building, that would complement what seniors need when seniors are getting close to their end-of-life journeys. We think we have that. In fact, Kathy and I, our names will be on the list of the first two people who want to move in when we get it built, God willing, and we live that long. And that says nothing about how long the process should take, nor does it say anything about how long we might live. But we are terribly excited about this. Council will present all of this, and we look forward to it going forward. I have challenged them all to get it right the first time, think it through, make believe you live here, make believe you care about here, and make believe you want to stay here, and we'll see what we get. Thank you very much.
Okay. Share my screen again. Okay. So thank you very much, Paul. You know, when we first started looking at the project, the vision that Paul set forth for us was sort of these sort of six criterion. We want to create a true mixed-use community in the heart of the South Washington Street corridor with a mix of medical office, ground-floor retail, and restaurant uses, independent living units, assisted living units, and memory care, all in one project. The idea is to complement other projects that have occurred in the vicinity, be it Pearson Square a number of years ago, more recently, the Reserve at Tanner Hill. Second, the second bullet point, at a time when most projects are seeking to reduce the amount of non-residential in the project, he wanted to have a medical office component and a substantial ground-floor retail component. We are proposing about 57,000 square feet of new Class A commercial space. We are also setting aside 1,600 square feet of civic and nonprofit space to serve as a home for the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation. The third bullet point is that we really do view this as a positive step in the implementation of longstanding city planning policies that go back at least a decade, which I'll talk about in a second. Fourth, we are looking to have a fiscally beneficial project that will not be a drain on the city's treasury. As Ms. Arseneau stated, the city's fiscal impact analysis anticipates that the project is substantially fiscally beneficial to the city of over $903,000 annually. Fifth, as I mentioned, we wanted to have a, put our best foot forward with a complete submission upfront. We wanted to have a well-rounded community benefits package, both in terms of dollar amount and the breadth of services that are provided and commitments that are made. There's still a lot left to negotiate in the process. We get that. This is just at the start, but we wanted to head in the right direction as much as we could. And last, and perhaps the most important one, is we want this to be a catalyst project for encouraging new growth in a part of the city that has not seen as much, I'd say, in the past five or six years relative to the other sections of the city. So it's about place-making, it's about economic developments, it's about housing opportunities for seniors, and as Paul mentioned, this will be built in a single phase. Some of the things that, you know, just building on this point, we really wanted this to be sort of a community builder project. We are emphasizing six key areas in this. First is the senior housing bullet. That's to provide a comfortable and dignified living to house the city's largest demographic group, that being people that are over 55 years. They're also the fastest-growing in the city as far as the demographic group. Second was to provide direct access to quality food, both for the surrounding community, but also for the residents that would live here. There will be onsite interior dining opportunities for memory care, assisted living, and independent living residents, but they should be able to go outside and immediately to the private sector, you know, the other private sector offerings right around them. Third, to serve the needs of building residents and the broader community, we wanted to have medical office. The city has long targeted medical office as one of the areas that it could look to, to attract new office tenants. We are right on South Washington Street, Route 29. Virginia Hospital Center is just a couple miles to the east. Merrifield, with all of its non-owner occupied medical office uses, at Anova Fairfax is just a couple miles to the west. So we think this is smack dab in the middle of it, and it will perform phenomenally well from a medical office leasing perspective. Fourth, and I'll show this in a second, we are trying to emphasize connectivity for all mobility levels, those on, you know, pedestrians, you know, bicyclists, those in vehicles, but we are trying to also connect the site, you know, provide connections around the site and then through the site, and we'll show you how we're proposing to do that. Fourth is to have substantial outdoor park space with direct access to natural and landscaped areas that are publicly accessible. If you look at the South Washington Street Small Area Plan, there are not a lot of parks planned. There's a couple here and there, but nothing on the magnitude of what we are proposing to deliver with this project. And last but not least, is to acknowledge our history, both the good and the bad as a city, including the historic Rolling Road and the Tanner Hill community, which, both of which are adjacent to the site. Staff sort of already mentioned where the property is located. It's shown, outlined here in red. The application property where the rezoning would take place is shown where it says "application property." But then we're also proposing an off-site improvement on the existing Fairfax Street right-of-way, which if you go out there today, it's just an old street, roadbed, there's some, you know, parallel parking. Not a lot of attention has been paid to it over the years, but we are proposing to upgrade that as an off-site improvement. In terms of the comprehensive planning policies, Ms. Arseneau kind of touched on those, but again, these are policies that apply to the site that have not been implemented despite many of them being in place for longer than a decade. The future land use map, which is shown on the right-hand side, designates this property, most of the property, two-thirds of it for mixed-use development, and then one of the three parcels for business uses. In 2005, there was the city's adopted comprehensive plan, and that plan recommends higher density to development with integrated parking through lot consolidation on this site. And then further in 2013, seven years later, or eight years later, was the adoption of the South Washington Street Small Area Plan, and that plan groups this property in the city's core commercial area, which is intended to develop into the highest intensity of mixed-use developments in the city. That core commercial area goes between South Maple Street and South Washington Street, all the way up to West Broad Street, where Ireland's Four Provinces is, and where Atlantic was proposing, is proposing its one-city center project. So in So, in, aside from the West End Economic Development Project, the high school site, this is pretty much the one area of the city which is meant to have, or planned to have, higher density, more residential units, and taller buildings. The 2013 bicycle master plan proposes on-street, or recommends on-street bicycle facilities along South Maple Avenue, which we are providing with this application. We had some discussion at City Council about whether there should be protected bike lanes, or whether there should be just, you know, sharrows and, you know, on-street bike lanes, and we can look at that. And then the last one on here is the 2017 Streetscape Master Plan, which recommends sidewalks and all frontages, bus connections, and then a series of, you know, hardscaping and other types of improvements like benches and lighting. The requests, the specific requests of council that would be before them would be, one, is special exception for mixed-use redevelopment; two, a special exception for an increase in building height; three, an amendment to the comprehensive plan's future land use map, which we just talked about, to change the designation of one of the three parcels from business to mixed-use so that residential uses or, you know, living uses could be included. And last but not least is a parking reduction of about 22%. The proposed development, as Ms. Arseneau said, would be a 10-story, 115-foot-tall Lead Gold mixed-use building. It would have about 52,000 square feet of new commercial uses, and you can see the breakdown there. 226 residential units, you know, many of them would be independent living units, 55 assisted living units, and then 31 memory care units. As I mentioned, we have a little over 1,600 square feet for the Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, which we have been actively working with over a number of years. There would be a 5,000-square-foot publicly-accessible rooftop patio on the roof, and that could be used for, you know, outdoor events, you know, food trucks could be up there, similar to what you see in Tyson's Corner, above Capital One Hall, where there is actually a food truck on the roof, but we think that would be a neat, you know, a neat feature. We do have 292 parking spaces in a three-level, partially below-grade garage, so two of the levels are below grade, and then one is the, you know, a couple spaces as you come in, and then the ramps to go down. That would be architecturally masked. In terms of housing affordability, we are proposing a $1.75 million contribution, and we would like that to be targeted to acquire, you know, housing at Virginia Village. We realize that there's a lot of policy issues and things like that that we have to work out with Housing Department staff, with council, and with the Planning Commission on that, but that was sort of our, sort of, opening thought. And that's just due to the unique nature of a continuing care facility and the inability to disaggregate services from accommodation costs. We are proposing creation of a new public park. We have $25,000 for public art. We have sidewalk upgrades on all sides, and we do have commitments, pecuniary commitments for the libraries, parks, and stormwater. Here's an overall illustration of the site, site plan, a rendered site plan. We can walk you through each of the building levels here in a second. Suffice to say that there's a substantial amount of ground floor, you know, activated uses, and open space, which we have provided, both with the rejiggered Fairfax Street right-of-way, and then what we're proposing to call Rolling Road Park, which would be with the Fairfax Street right-of-way, about a 27,000-square-foot public accessible park. With that, I'll turn it over to Clint Brackman, who is our project architect, and he can take you through the building architecture. So, Clint, if you're available.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Clint Brackman with Architecture Incorporated, and as Andrew said, this is the site in question. We are bordered to the north by South Maple, and to the south by South Washington, and on the northeast, as you can see, Fairfax Drive, which we've included within the footprint of the park and the improvements thereon. This is a park truly designed to emphasize pedestrian interaction. So, for example, you can see the green there, which is a large lawn area. There's an amphitheater associated with that. We've indicated outdoor dining on the northeast corner of the building, where a restaurant is indicated, and a lot of hardscaped areas, of course, facing all the retail to emphasize pedestrian access to the retail storefronts along that side of the building. As mentioned, it's a 10-story building with a maximum height of 115 feet at the level of a rooftop terrace, which we'll show you in a minute. We do have vehicular drive access from South Washington and South Maple, which if we go to the next slide, I can show you how that is organized on the first floor. This is the first floor, grade level, and you can see roughly half of this level is parking. The planned south area is the access from South Washington. You can drive into the parking garage, and as you can see, drive out through to South Maple or vice versa, as well as ramp down to the two levels of subterranean parking that we do have below this level as well. The area in Magenta on the south of the plan is a two-story lobby area, which is designed to emphasize the connection not only to the elevator core that serves the residential component of the building, but also with a monumental stair access to the second floor, which is the medical office component. As you can see, the retail is all oriented to the right-hand side or east of the building, again, to emphasize access and connection to that park area with a restaurant noted on the top-right corner. On the next slide, I think we can show you the two levels of subterranean parking that we do have. We have, as mentioned previously, 292 spaces, including all two-and-a-half levels of the parking. The elevator core is to the plan south of this garage area, and we do have 16 electrical vehicle charging stations in the design plan now, with additional capacity for more stations in the future. The parking garage is a little bit larger than the building footprint and does extend underneath a portion of the park, would effectively have a green roof on it at that point to maintain the hardscaping, the landscaping that we're showing you on that park plan. On the next slide, we can show you the second floor of the building, which is the medical office floor. All the areas in blue would be, of course, medical office. It's a gross of about 36,000 square feet on this floor. Again, you can see the two-story lobby and how it would connect to this level. We do have an interior courtyard as well to allow window access to the interior tenant spaces on this floor. The next slide shows the third floor, which is our memory care floor. We have 31 memory care units on this floor, and you can start to see one of the strategies that we're employing in the massing of this building, where we're stepping back elements of the facade as we go vertically to help articulate some elements of scale, but also preserve sun angles as it relates to adjacency of the park and other structures. It affords also opportunity for outdoor access, of course, to the residents, which is especially important to the memory care garden on this level, which you see on the left, which is a component of the care plan for memory care residents. We do have a shared kitchen on this level, serving memory care dining space as well as independent living dining space, and three independent living units on this floor as well. The next level is showing the fourth and fifth floor, which are our assisted living residences on these floors, and there are interior amenities spaces inside the building associated with these programs or these assisted living residences. It's also worth noting that we do have a variety of unit types in the floor plan to be able to address various demands in the market condition. On the next floor, starting with the sixth floor, that's where our independent living units start to exist, and they exist from the sixth floor to the 10th floor. And again, you can see additional stepbacks in the facade of the building, creating additional outdoor terrace areas, which are a benefit to the residents of the building. You do have access to those spaces. On the right-hand side of this slide, you see Level 7, which is identical to the next slide, which is Floor 7 and 8, or sorry, 8 and 9. And that's to allow for vertical construction stacking, some efficiency of construction, and also reflecting the unit mix that I previously mentioned. The next floor shows the 10th floor, which is similar but different in one concept, which is that the portion of the facade on South Washington Street has been pulled back to create an outdoor rooftop deck right next to some interior amenities space in the elevator core that would allow, obviously, outdoor access space, but also views of South Washington Street. We view that as a complement to the next slide, which is the rooftop deck, and what we're proposing there is a fairly extensive, as mentioned, approximately 5,000-square-foot rooftop deck that would be served by an extension of that elevator core that comes up to this level and discharges onto the rooftop deck, which would have amenities such as different seating arrangements, soft seating, umbrella tables, a potential pergola, a bar on this level, possibly fire pits, and, as Andrew mentioned, the innovative idea of possibly including a food truck on this level. To show you what that looks like in three dimensions on the next slide, these are views from all four corners of the building, indicating the strategy I outlined in the floor plan, where we're creating stepbacks in the building as we go vertical to create both outdoor access areas for residents. So, the building would also preserve sun angles and interrupt the scale of the building to visually break down the scale of the building. One of the important features that we are pursuing is a two-story facade that rings the podium of the building, and addresses really what we feel is important, is the pedestrian scale of the structure which fronts on the plaza. And so, we feel that's an important strategy. And the view on the bottom right, which faces to the west, and a parklet that I understand is planned for that side of the building, we're entertaining the idea of including local artists and some, you know, a notional idea of some murals that may be painted on this wall. It's an idea that requires further discussion and evaluation, but that's an idea that we're contemplating, we think would be a nice feature for the park. The next slide speaks a little bit about some of the materiality, and as mentioned at the outset, this is a design that continues to evolve, and we welcome the opportunity to include feedback that we'll receive from this group. But materiality, right now, we're anticipating dark-anodized metal windows and trim, contrasted with a buff-colored metal brick, or panel, or sorry, brick or metal panel system on many of the upper stories of the building, and then contrasted with an alternate color of metal panel on some of the other portions of the facade that we want to articulate differently, again, to break down the scale of the building. The retail facade, the two-story facade along the podium would be an iron-spout brick, which is a nearly black brick, is somewhat timeless and certainly contemporary in terms of, you know, its popularity right now, but that would be facing the park area as that two-story component. The next slide, I think, is okay.
Okay. Just to touch on the landscaping, we have about 68% total landscape space on the site, I'm sorry, about 66% total landscape space on the site, and the total amount of landscaped open space, using the city's definition, is about 34%, and that's twice as much as the next nearest mixed-use special exception project in the city, which is Pearson Square, and that's about 16%. There was one question that was asked at City Council to provide an overview of the total landscape space at the ground plane level, which we can get those numbers for the next one. I don't have them here this evening. As we mentioned at the beginning, we are proposing the creation of a new 27,000-square-foot public park. We have a 5,000-square-foot publicly-accessible rooftop patio area, which will be open to the public. Mr. Quinn had asked us to really focus on native plants, biofiltration, and the maintenance of biodiversity, and to come up with a plant palette that is native and vernacular to the DC metro region, the mid-Atlantic states, and so we are working on that as well. And then we are also trying to have, again, pedestrian-oriented design that connects the South Washington Street corridor and downtown. This is an overview of the proposed landscape plan. And just to sort of provide some context, these are images that our landscape architect had looked at in terms of coming up with, you know, the inspiration for it. We are proposing a small amphitheater. We'd have bench seating that works with the topography of the land, and there is substantial topography as one moves from South Maple down to South Washington Street, you know, sort of, you know, major areas for people to gather and congregate, could be used for festivals, fairs, you know, even a farmer's market if it was so desired. And then the two pedestrian pathways that we'll look to, we looked at good linear parks, both in the DC metro region, but also across the country, not just the High Line in New York City, which everyone kind of points to, but Miami has its underline, Boston has its emerald necklace, but the idea is really to have something that's a little bit different than that 130-foot zone that is on the south side or the west side of the Reserve at Tanner Hill, that is by Victory Comics, that connects South Maple and South Washington Street. We want to have something that has public art on it, bench seating, something that's very inviting and very leafy and green, but these two promenades. A portion of the open space, we are proposing to, you know, on the application property, we're proposing to place under a public access easement, and then, as I mentioned, we're proposing to upgrade the Fairfax Street right-of-way from what is today a vehicular asphalt condition into one of the two promenades. But the concept here is to have a series of hardscaping elements, landscaping, pathways, pedestrian connections, shade structures, and more for an area of the city that this is not contemplated under the city's current planning documents. We do think it provides a, you know, good set of connections for pedestrians and bicyclists between the blocks in particular. And again, there's two promenades, the Fairfax Street promenade, and then one that is perpendicular to it that connects the Fairfax Street promenade down to South Washington Street. The gray or the blue square, that would be a central green, we would work with Little City Catch Foundation, Arts and Humanities Council, Tanner Hill Foundation, and more to help program that space. And then again, we're proposing the Fairfax Street upgrades as an off-site improvement. We would be perpetually responsible for the maintenance of, obviously, the portion that will remain on the application property, but then also, subject to a maintenance agreement, we would be willing to take on the maintenance of the upgraded Fairfax Street right-of-way as well. And we understand from the city that they do not want us to vacate that right-of-way and incorporate it into the property. They, the city would rather retain ownership of that in fee simple. In terms of transportation upgrades, Ariel Jarvis is online with Grove Slade, but just a couple of things, you know, we talked about upgrades to sidewalks along all frontages. We talked about parking, the parking reduction. We are proposing that a minimum of 10 free public parking spaces be provided in the parking garage. We are proposing 5% electric vehicle chargers, which equates to about 16 spaces day one, and then running conduit for an additional 15% of the total parking spaces, which is 44 spaces. We have new bicycle parking. We would propose to have a dockless zone for, you know, bicycles and scooters in the property and more. And then we will also have a transportation demand management plan to reduce single occupancy vehicle trips from the site, and we have proposed a covered bus shelter along South Washington Street. So, with that, I think that that concludes my sort of opening remarks, our opening presentation. Me alongside with our entire development team and Andrew Teeters, who is the joint venture development partner for the Quinns, is available to answer any questions. So, we appreciate your time and indulgence.
All right. Well, thank you very much, both to the staff and to the developer team for providing, I think, a very good introduction to this project. Let's turn now to the boards and commissions. Are there any members of a board and commission here? Why don't we invite you up to the podium, and please feel welcome to ask questions or to make any preliminary comments that you might have. And in the meantime, Mr. Trainor, do we have any board and commission members online that have requested to participate that way?
Look, we have, yeah, Jason McGarman, sorry, this is really loud, who's raised his hand.
I believe he's with the ESC.
Yeah, I'm seeing just one right now. If there are any more, please raise your hand.
Okay. Well, we'll start off with Mr. Sharisi and see who shows up online then.
Thank you. I won't pretend to speak for the entire ESC, because we have a lot of experience there in a lot of different fields, which I can not possibly represent all of that this evening. But a few notes, I think Lead Gold is a great place to start, and I also think that it's fantastic to have the developer here already making voluntary concessions and allowing ESC and other boards and commissions to give feedback, and so early in the process. With Founder's Row II and other ones recently, it was a bit later, and that was really annoying for us, so I'm very happy about that. So, thank you. Yeah, Lead Gold, great, great place to start. Definitely, you know, could consider doing more always to improve that, and it would be great, you know, there's a checklist of Lead Gold things that you have to check off to get that energy award, or what you want to call it. It would be great to know what those are, you know, what are the actual things that you're going to do to bring us to Lead Gold. We've talked a little bit about parking. I think a 22% reduction is very reasonable ask to the city. There's actually quite a lot of parking lots in that area of the city, in my opinion. I would personally recommend, as city staff suggested, doing a parking reduction study and figuring out exactly what the minimum amount that we can have in there. As this is below-grade parking, you know, the cost of that in Virginia is going to be 35, or $30,000 to $50,000 per parking spot, and is that where we want the developer to be spending their money on this project? Or would we rather them spend more money on more greenery, more affordable housing, more concessions for our schools, for, you know, anything else that this board wants to prioritize? So, I would encourage further reductions below the 22% reduction personally. I think a lot of the things in here, like 18% tree cover, is, you know, pretty reasonable, maybe on that promenade on that side street, Fairfax Street. As a resident of Winter Hill area, I actually go on that street every single day, pretty much. I don't think, it's not very well-used, and it's very anti-pedestrian, in my opinion, but... but it's kind of hard to, to navigate and get over there, it's a very isolating area. So, you know, further tree cover, further green space over there, I think would be very welcome by the neighbors and, and local businesses. I also know there was a previous development, cut me off, you know, if I'm, if I'm going too long, but I know there was a previous development that had bought the little parking lot on the corner of, I don't remember, of South Maple and Annandale, there's like a pocket park thing that they were going to put in, that wasn't, that didn't happen. Maybe this could be a project that makes that happen, I, I don't know. And the last thing that I would just add there is, has there been any, any talk of the heat island effect for this type of building? I know it's kind of nestled between two large roads and there's a lot of paved area right now in that area, so maybe something else to take in, to consideration? And yeah, what else can we do for affordable housing? What other positive impacts on our community can this place have? But overall, I, I think it's, personally, I would support this project, you know, moving forward, and I know it's still at the early stages, but it seems like a great addition to the community and it's, as what's been presented, at least.
Thank you. Okay. Well, Mr. Trainor, did someone show up online, perhaps, from a board and commission?
Yeah, we have Jason Garman and then Philip Osborne. Mr. Garman, go ahead.
Yes, hi, my name is Jason Garman, I'm the vice chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation. Just a couple of quick comments, you know, of course, we'll, we'll be looking forward to further review of the traffic impact analysis and the transportation and parking demand management plans as they are made available, but I just wanted to call out a few things that we look for at a high level in, in the development review process. First two would be adherence to both the Bicycle Master Plan as well as the Streetscape standards. It looks like with the pedestrian space that, that's being proposed as part of this project, that from a streetscape perspective, I think it looks like, I think it looks really promising with the, the promenades on, on a couple of sides of the building. And with respect to the Bicycle Master Plan, South Maple is allocated as a, for, for future on-street facilities for, for bicycles, and so we just want to make sure that we are adhering to that or allowing for that to, to occur either with or separate from the project itself. One other project that we'd like to, to call attention to and make sure that we're in close coordination within the development process here is the proposed roundabout design for the future intersection redesign at South Maple and West Annandale, and, and just ensuring that, that any streetscape or any, any, you know, street reorientation redesign adjacent to the property on South Maple is, is worked in conjunction with that project. One other thing that we, that we've looked for in, in prior development projects as well, and we appreciate the, the allocation of parking spaces on the first level with, for things like restaurant delivery services and, and just other public access, but we've often found that delivery drivers or, you know, just ride-share drivers in general are often a little reticent to go into garages to, to, to conduct their operations and choose to just use the street as a, as a faster alternative. And so we would, we would strongly encourage consideration for small, you know, one or two parking space loading zones for ride-share and restaurant delivery services actually on the street itself rather than in the garage, so that, that's one thing that we've, that we've called attention to in prior development projects as well. But the last thing I say is that I think this is, with respect to, to other mixed-use projects in the city, I think this one's really unique in a good way in what it's going, in what it could potentially offer for the city, for the perspective of seniors being able to age in place and, and, you know, downsize as they, as they see fit. And one way that that intersects with transportation is what we like to call mobility for all modes and all abilities, and so as, as, as people age, they may be less confident or less comfortable or less able to drive, and so providing the infrastructure to offer them safe and convenient alternatives to driving, particularly in an area that has so much to walk to or to bike to, is, is great, but we've got to be able to provide the, the right level of infrastructure to make it safe for all ages and all abilities. So, thank you for your time today and thank you for the initial presentation. We look forward to reviewing the, the details from the transportation perspective going forward.
All right, well, thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Trainor, we have one more, I believe?
Yep, Philip Osborne is on the line.
Yeah, Mr. Osborne, I believe you're with the Architectural Advisory Board, please proceed.
Hi, unfortunately, I had a very tough time logging in and I missed virtually all of the presentations, so I think that looks like a good thing so far, but I can't really offer any other opinions, unfortunately. There's this, one of the senior people around that's have, have, have a, a good handle on it, but good luck and let's go with it.
Okay, well, thank you for those comments. All right, Mr. Trainor, are we complete with our board and commission members?
Yeah, from the list I have, if I'm missing anyone online.
Speak up now if we've missed you. Doesn't appear to be the case. So, that being the case, I think we can move on to members of the planning commission. Would anyone like to start with questions or comments? Mr. Puentez.
Thank you. And great comments from the, from the commissions that covered a lot of the things I was going to dig into, so maybe just to reiterate a couple of things, I do think it's, it's, it is exciting, it's clearly an underperforming area that needs some innovative thinking and this is an innovative idea, it's an area that clearly needs activation, it's not very active right now, it's hostile to pedestrians, as was mentioned earlier, and so I think it's a really good start for a lot of reasons that have been mentioned. But going forward, a couple of things I'd like to get more kind of clarification on, I really don't understand the parking calculations, and it's a little confusing between what's been proposed and what the staff, I think, calculated. It looks like it's split between the residential uses and the non-residential uses, we think that there's not enough parking for the residential uses and too much for retail or vice versa. Just going forward, just more clarification on that, I think, I really agree with the comments, we don't want to overpark this, like we overpark a lot of the things in the city and, you know, for the reasons that was mentioned, more emphasis on other ways to get around, especially for people who, who may not be able to drive, right, for this particular, for the particular occasion. So, just more clarification and just really better understanding of, of the parking needs, what's really being asked here, what the calculations are and, you know, what can we, what can we not do? I'm not real, a big fan of the parking on the ground floor, I mean, if we're trying to activate this space, I don't think ground floor parking is going to do that. So, I really want to like that part of it, I really want to give the parking reductions, but I, I just want to understand that a little bit more. The traffic impact study is something I'd like some more information on too, I know there was some correspondence with VDOT about the eight ninety study, which I guess gets, gets activated when there's a five, when it's five thousand units or whatever it is. So, does that mean we don't need to do it for this? Does that mean there's not going to be a traffic impact analysis? Just, again, more clarification about how that comes together. It, it's a big site, right, there's going to be a lot of, of transportation, traffic impacts, but it's not clear to me what's going to get done and what's, you know, what's not going to get done, related to that TDM thing that goes along with it. So, all of those things really hang together and I think we hear a lot about the transportation impacts, you've heard about, a lot about that already. So, kind of better understanding about all that going forward is really, would be really helpful. I'm not a hundred percent clear on the rooftop piece, I don't know what happens on the rooftop, I don't get the food truck on the rooftop, I just, maybe that's something that happens, but I'd like to get some more understanding about that. Is it the idea it's a public space, people go up there and hang out, so, you know, and if it's, if there's retail, is there restaurants up there, is that a retail use? There just seems to be some, some vagaries around that, some more, some more details on. Can't read my own handwriting here. Yeah, so, a couple of things we can go for, but in the Design Review Committee, the Housing and Human Services staff recommends that the city receive a credit for low and moderate income city residents who live at the facility. I just didn't understand what that meant, just like some more clarification on that piece there. But again, lots to like here, it's a good first step and I look forward to the initial conversation.
Mr. Chairman, could I, if, would it be possible just to respond to a couple of things real quick?
Please do.
Just to some stream of consciousness thoughts. One, in terms of the parking calculations, we probably spent a plurality of the time on all the issues related to this case, like when we've had our internal team meetings about what the right parking ratio was, how to calculate it. We looked at the Transwestern building over at the high school site, which is the one that's, that's, that's planned for, you know, the fifteen-story continuing care facility one. We looked at the Kensington, we even looked at going all the way back to the Sunrise. We looked at comparable ones in Arlington County and Fairfax County to try to find the right rate, how to classify it, and unfortunately, where we ran into it was trying to discern in our, no offense, but an archaic, you know, set of zoning ordinance definitions and how the things are supposed to be classified. So, we did our best effort to try to break things out, staff is reviewing it now, we'll be working with them so that when this does come back in front of you, it will be a lot clearer. I think we'll all have, we'll have clarity on that. In terms of the ground floor space, totally get what you're saying as well, we've tried to have a minimum number of spaces and just the ramping on that entry level, and we've tucked it to the western side of the property as we did the entirety of the building, shifting it up to the property line, so that the majority of the retail is on the eastern side and on the northern side along Maple Avenue. In terms of a TIA, so VDOT has its chapter eight seventy requirements, and you're right about the threshold being if you have more than five thousand trips a day over what is currently planned, VDOT determined that we do not need to do an eight seventy, which is kind of a junior TIA. We will be doing a full-blown traffic impact analysis, and we've been having our scoping meeting with the city on that, so that will be a, a full breadth document that will be included with that. Similarly, our transportation demand management plan, we're trying to get to the right number, that will come out and be born with the TIA as well, as well as all the different measures that we do to meet the TDM requirements. In terms of the rooftop, you know, what we showed tonight was kind of our preliminary thinking as far as landscaping, there's a lot of green roof, we didn't want to have a lot of areas for like HVAC condensers and just gravel or just asphalt, you know, shingles or anything like that, we're trying to make full use of that space. The concept of the food truck, though, is actually something that came out of our discussions with some of the members of staff about a different way to try, to try to encourage people to come up there for something that's unique. It is hard for us to imagine a food truck being lifted up to the side of, of the building, but that's exactly what they did at the perch in Tyson's with a couple, like two different food trucks. But whether that space is just used as, as amenity space or a small amphitheater or there's a separate small restaurant up there, that's to be determined, but we will have a better sense of that when we come back before you on that. And as far as the DRC goes and the credit for low and moderate income housing, you know, the city has certain policies about providing low and moderate income housing in new developments, and then they also have policies related to cash equivalencies and things like that. We are, you know, we're going to, there's a lot of different competing priorities for the city and how we best use the community benefits of this, whether it's onsite units or cash, those are discussions that we will have to have with the housing staff and, and with council as, as we go forward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Speaking of housing, Mr. Hybert, would you like to, to go next?
All right. Thank you for the presentation. I would echo the sentiments of, of one of the speakers who said that having this plan come early is a nice change. I think it's a change that we hopefully will implement with all of our development deals, that this won't be a pilot, that this might be the pilot in the next one, but this, I, I think is a process that leads to a lot more dialogue, a lot more inclusion, and then hopefully a, a better project at the end, I don't know. There'll be a lot of conflict because we have a lot of competing priorities, but I do like the fact that this has come so early and has kind of come to us a little bit before the city council has almost given its official sign-off, which is usually when we get deals, so it is really hard to, to influence them. I also think that this is an area of the city that could use some revitalization, but it is also an area of the city where there is a good proportion of our low moderate income housing. It seems like the applicant has thought pretty seriously about having the subsidies that come from this building go right to Virginia Village, which is great, I, I really appreciate that. But I would like some more specificity on how the one point seven five was calculated, one point seven five million. I think about Virginia Village, a quad is eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, so that's four units, this is about maybe eight units. When I think about eight units in the scope of two hundred and twenty-six units, I'm, I'm kind of thinking that that might not necessarily be sufficient in terms of the contribution, but I'm not entirely sure, so I'd just like to hear more about how you calculated the one point seven five. It seems like with each one of our deals going forward, we've asked the developers to give a little bit more, right, so like going on prior, it's like, well, just don't go by prior because every other one, we're asking for a little bit greater percentage to go towards affordable housing. Some of the other things I was thinking about was the fiscal impact analysis, I see we have the head of the firm here who did the fiscal impact analysis, but I think that, and this goes for all of our fiscal impact analysis, we get these analyses about how much tax revenue is going to be generated and then how much potentially will be spent, and it's just a, a table, but we never know what's undergirding the assumptions in making that analysis. I think we need that, I mean, we need that as planning commissioners, I think that the public needs to see that, to really understand how much are these buildings costing the city and what really is the fiscal benefit. I, I think that's really important and for me, there is no way anyone can calculate really what, what is happening in the tables that we were provided. I'm sure there's a lot of data and a lot of assumptions that go into that table, but we need to kind of see that to better understand how much revenue, tax revenue is going to be generated by the changes that we are making. So, think about this, like, we are going to change the use of that site, that change is what activates the additional revenue. So, we should know what that additional revenue is and then we can think about how to appropriate that revenue, whether it's towards affordable housing or park space or whatever, but it's, it's kind of hard to understand really what the, the fiscal impact would be. The other thing I was thinking about is what this building is going to provide, which is assisted living, I think that's great, there is a need in our country for that, there's a need in our town for that, but also, we just had West Falls Church which has that, we've got the Kensington that has that, we have Sunrise, so like, we are starting to produce properties that are all going towards the same things. At some point, we're going to overproduce that type of housing in our town, and do we want to do that? So, to kind of think about that, and I don't know how much we've thought about that in terms of what this building is going to provide. I do love that Tanner Hill is being thought about, this is the section of our city, to, to have a community benefit of having that organization have a space within this building, I think that's a tremendous benefit, and again, I'm glad we've thought about that. The other, the last thing I will say is, Mr. Quinn, I mean, I'm so glad you're here, I loved what you presented, and I know you have a deep connection and history to the town, but I, I, I mean, I just really, it's a question I have for you, is, is how much experience do you have, does your company have doing development? I know you had the auction house, I know you own the properties, but typically partnerships are done with like EYA or like an established developer, I mean, a lot of the developments that we've had in our town are with development firms, and I, and I haven't really heard much about the development firms that you're working with. I understand some of the consultants and the land use lawyer and I, I see the components right in front of me, but I didn't hear you really talk about, and the architect is on the phone, you know, are you putting this all together? Is there another team that you're partnering with? I mean, you kind of said you had a developer and then they went away and now you've got a new one, but you didn't really explain who the new one was, I mean, and maybe I'm just a little naive and I don't know all the developers that are in our town, but when I look at a development like this, it's really difficult to pull this stuff off and you need a team that has deep, deep experience because the market changes very quickly and, you know, I, I'm just... And, you know, I, I'm just seeing this building, I'm seeing the number of units, I'm thinking about the capital costs and how they're changing like rapidly. And do you feel that you've got the team that understands that, but then also understands not the, just the financial component, but then executing the build-out of, of a development like this? Because I do feel that this is a very signature building in a very important part of our town, so we got to get it right because this building will spur the development all around it. And, and the other thing I would say for our city staff is to, you know, I, again, we sometimes do these one-offs, like, let's just look at this building, but think about this building in the context of where it's located. There is so much underutilized property there, and how will this building connect with all the other things that we hope will happen in that area? So again, I, maybe this comment is more for our staff, but when we get presentations like this, we really need more than just, you know, here's the building. We need to better understand as a planning commissioner, at least for me, I think some of our planning commissioners would agree, it's like, so what else is popping in this area in town? And how do we think about this development in conjunction with everything else? I felt tonight, we, we didn't really get that or enough of that. So anyway, those are most of my comments, and I'll just wrap up by saying I'm, I'm, I hope I'm not coming across too negatively, that I think that this is a really unique opportunity. It's a really important opportunity, and I'm really happy that we have somebody with deep roots in our town who wants to do this. Often we get people from out of town who want to come in and do things, and I don't always feel that they have the best interests of our town, and I feel with this deal, as it moves forward, that will always be at the forefront. So thank you for giving me the time to make comments.
Did you have any comments you wanted?
Yeah, if I may, and I appreciate the comments as well. Again, I'm, I'm delighted that we're here upfront. I agree with you. Hopefully this will create an early dialogue. We meet early and often, and we just keep, you know, a lot of transparency and, and input going forward. In terms of how the 1.75 million dollars was calculated, I know enough to be dangerous on this, but I have a slide that I can sort of just show as well. Very conveniently located in the slide deck, like as though I didn't know that we were going to be asked about this. So the city does have a policy that cash contributions are appropriate in certain circumstances if they are equivalent to the amount of onsite affordable that would otherwise be provided. So, you know, the numbers and, and just, I can walk you through briefly about how they were done, and, you know, we can get into another sidebar discussion about it later if you like, but it is equivalent to 10% of the proposed units being set aside as affordable at 60% AMI. What's, and, and that, and there's a lot of numbers and inputs that go into it, but one of the key things to note is that that is without any deductions from other voluntary concessions. So before Broad and Washington, the standard operating procedure was to seek 6% onsite affordable. With Broad and Washington, if you all recall, council had expressed a preference to increase that to 10%, and the developer said, yes, we will do that if we get a credit against our other cash contributions, particularly schools. So it took the schools' numbers down in order to provide the additional, the delta, the 4% to get to 10%, you know, of, of onsite affordability. With Founders Row Two, they said, well, we'll go to 12%, but again, they took a major discount against the schools' contribution. And, you know, this number that we've derived, though, we are confident is equivalent to 10%, providing 10% onsite units at this facility without any deductions against our other cash contributions with, with, with our voluntary concessions. The way it was derived is using a, the city's own preferred methodology for developing a unit purchase price, and this is where you see the, sort of the arrows are sort of marching down, and it's based upon the discounted variance in rental income for units being treated as both market rate units and then leasable affordable dwelling units and what that delta is. And then there are inputs that are inserted, you know, including the approved maximum ADU purchase price from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the city's own guidelines, as well as market rents surveyed from other apartments in the City of Falls Church. And the result is the delta, and that is the rental income that's based upon the proposed two U rental types over a 20-year period, and then it's discounted to present value. So that's, that's sort of the gist of how the numbers were derived, but we have provided sort of our math and shown our math on that, and we look forward to, you know, continuing to have that dialogue with, with staff about whether it's appropriate, whether the numbers are right, if it should be higher, or whatever it may be. In terms of the economic and fiscal analysis, there are two fiscal analyses that have been run on this project. One is through the city's, you know, longstanding titillate by methodology, and it, it computes fiscal impact with revenue and services provided, and that number comes out to be about $903,000. So that is the city's number. We ran our own fiscal impact analysis that also shows the economic impact, and we came up with a little over $1 million. So there's less than $100,000 difference between the city's numbers and our numbers. We again showed all of our math with our initial submission, all the different inputs, it's multiple spreadsheets, but all of that is in there. But what's unique about it is, and we've been in situations where the developer's number is way higher than what the city did. In this case, our number and the city's number pretty much match up within, within a realm of reason. In terms of what it will provide and the market demand for affordable housing, you know, we believe that there is a strong market for this. This is a city that's going on to 12,000 people. The majority of folks today that seek to age in place, they can go to the Kensington, but that is a very small, limited project. You know, Sunrise is a different level of care. A lot of people end up going to Goodwin House in Bailey's Crossroads, or a lot of them are looking at the Mather in Tyson's Corner, which is kind of the ultimate preeminent luxury one. Not sure the status of the Transwestern one that was approved, the 15-story one at, at the West Falls Church Economic Development Project, but we think that we are going to be hitting market on this. In terms of the connection, and I'm glad that, that that was brought up, I agree if, you know, additional analysis is warranted. What we've tried to do is to provide a connection based on where this is located in terms of open space, pedestrian connectivity in the block and around the block, history and, and food, and then again, meeting sort of the need for medical office space in the city, which the city has long looked to. And I would also say too, there is an entire chapter about aging populations and providing housing for, for elder, sort of elder care housing and things like that, that the city has adopted. In terms of the ability to actually construct this and move this, I, I might suggest that it might be good to just look at the land use merits of the application. I think that's the most important thing, and, you know, because that will be the ordinance that affects the property. And rather than just, you know, asking about, you know, one's ability to actually perform, I know that's sort of always a question, but, you know, the joint development partner in this, Andrew Teeters, you know, has 30 years of experience in developing senior housing communities. Many of you all might remember him working previously with Monarch Construction when they were looking at the Stratford Motor Lodge site, so he has plenty of experience and, 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 you know, so I'll, I'll turn it over to Andrew if you want to say a few words.
Yeah, sure. Again, Andrew Teeters. So interestingly, I, I've been looking in the City of Falls Church now for years, so I, I might be able to answer both of your questions related to the senior housing developer and the, the demand for this type of use. So as Andrew mentioned, I, I've been developing and operating senior housing communities for decades, several in Northern Virginia, four in Fairfax County, throughout the Mid-Atlantic and the Northeast. And so years ago, I started looking at the City of Falls Church because, and this is a very close-knit community, there is really no, in fact, there is no rental independent living in the City of Falls Church today that has services and then the age-in-place continuum of care concept. And I know West End was approved, but it hasn't yet been built. And so years ago, I was looking for properties through the company that I had formed called Monarch Communities, and we were looking at the Stratford Motor Lodge. Ultimately, that was not the right project for us, but it put me in touch with the Quinn family. And so two years ago, we were engaging in conversations with the Quins through my company, which ultimately I sold out of that company because they, I spun off, they went to the Northeast, and I'm remaining in the Mid-Atlantic. And so it's been a lengthy process too, because, and this is a great aspect of the project, is we added homestretch. In the last year, we added homestretch to the project. So now we have the assemblage, which is really enabling us to provide the public park, the open space, the rolling road promenade, the density we need to really make this a viable project. And so, you know, back to the uses, what we're proposing, I, I do want to make the distinction between what we're proposing and Kensington and Sunrise. So in, you know, starting with Kensington, that's completely an assisted living and memory care community. They are a phenomenal operator. I know them very well. It's a higher acuity, higher level of care. We are really on the lower end of that spectrum. So our independent living residents, you know, it's a full apartment with a kitchen, unlike Kensington or Sunrise. Sunrise is another great operator, which is also all assisted living and memory care. And so, you know, with a, a full apartment, they can cook on their own, but our independent living residents will receive one meal a day included in their monthly fee, as well as weekly housekeeping, transportation services. Fortunately, we're in an environment where people can walk to the Harris Teeter or walk to the local restaurants. And so, but as their needs increase and as they age in place, we do have, as we showed, two floors of assisted living and then one dedicated secured floor of memory care, but all the upper levels are independent living. And so that's, you know, really that continuum of care, we're targeting a 75-plus demographic, so even though this is age restricted typically over 55, usually people are in their 70s that are moving into this type of community. You know, we're right on the front end of the baby boom, and so this, sort of they call it, that silver tsunami is coming, and that's really who we're going to be attracting, you know, over the next five to 10 years. So I hope that helps.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we should move on. Looking on the right side of the dais, Commissioner, come on, you are the last one on that side. I was going to open the floor to you if you had any questions or comments.
Sure, I have a few. One thing that I just want to make sure we discuss, and I'm, I'm imagining that Ms. Friedlander will touch on it more eloquently than I will, but, you know, the, it doesn't, it doesn't look like the building is tapered on the, on the frontages that face both Virginia Village and, and the Henderson House. And, and that is something that I would just like to, to think about, whether we can do a little bit more to reduce the, the, the feeling of the bulk of the building for those residential uses. I'm also wondering about the, the lack of the sort of more direct street frontage. It looks like a lot of the retail is on the plaza, which is, which is great, and I would also just like to say, I, I think there's many things about this project that are really great, but I'm just wondering how, you know, really how you're thinking about trying to direct people into that plaza to like really attract them to those retail uses. I was glad to hear you mentioned shade structures earlier, that those can be really, you know, pieces of public art, and, and I would, I think in our, in our future of climate change happening, I think shade is going to be a really important feature, especially in a bigger open space like that. So I just want to make sure that we're thinking about how all those elements can work together to kind of draw people in off of the street and into the plaza to reach the retail. I do think that we should be looking at, you know, whether, whether we can install some protected bike lanes on Maple. We do have a, a lane that comes down, you know, I think maybe we can look at expanding that, you know, at least to the project. I'm really excited about the improved pedestrian and cyclist connections through the plaza. I think that's going to be a really excellent improvement for that area. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, a lot of my questions and comments have already been shared by my colleagues, so the only other thing I want to mention is that there's a, there's a crosswalk on Maple that is up, like up maybe 50 feet north of Gibson or so. It kind of crosses where the bowling alley is, and it might be to look at whether we can relocate that so that it's a more direct connection to Gibson Street and, and the, and Big Jimmy's Park beyond, just so we can really kind of try to connect all of these public spaces together. And I, I think that the, the amount of open space that you have here and the tree canopy coverage and, and all is, is really, is really excellent. It's not something that we normally see with these projects, so I really do want to compliment you on that and, and for all the, all the, the many things that you're offering the, the community with this, with this project.
Okay, thank you. Let's turn to this side now. Questions, comments, Ms. Krasner?
Yeah, I'll go. I guess, you know, maybe I'll step back, and I think actually Derek was kind of touching on this when he, when he mentioned kind of looking at the area from a broader perspective. I mean, the reality is the city's done that in pieces over the years, and the problem is, you know, there's, maybe it's inconvenient, but I guess they're asking for a comp plan change, but right now, the, the small area plan, you know, doesn't call for a lot of residential here. You know, calls for, you know, the core, calls it, you know, it's the core commercial area of this portion of the city, and calls for, and actually uses pretty strong language, which I don't recall seeing in some of the other small area plans, where it actually says residential should be disallowed or minimized, you know, and residential should be kind of at the periphery to help activate it. And so in order to do a future land use, to change the land use map, you know, typically we would look at the comp plan or the small area plan and say, this changing the land use map jive with what the comp plan says. In this case, you know, it kind of doesn't, so we're getting, we might be looking at revising some of that plan text if we feel that that's what we want to see. But right now, this is essentially a residential project, and I have no sort of problems with the use, you know, in general, but it's essentially a residential project that has some accessory, you know, medical office and retail. And so again, this is a policy question, it's a, you know, planning question that as the commission we should chew on, you know, as part of looking at this, is whether or not, you know, we want to change the comp plan to encourage this type of use here, which would be a departure from what the plan that was adopted 10 years ago, and things do change, it's not 30 years ago, it's 10 years ago, called for something, you know, somewhat different. And so I think I just picked up on that, and the staff flags it in their analysis and the applicant, you know, touches on it in their justification, so it's not a surprise to anybody, but I think it's something we just, we shouldn't overlook that. You know, that's a big level policy change. Before we get into, you know, the color of the building and, you know, some of the, the nitty-gritty details, I think, you know, from a big picture, picture perspective, we need to decide if we feel that the comp plan change is, you know, appropriate. And of course, you know, markets change and things change and the office environment and hotel environment, I think the, the small area plan talks about hotel and office, you know, and, and things like that change, and we've seen, you know, some of that play out in other projects, but I just wanted to put that out there. I know the applicant's aware of it, but I think, you know, trying to really look at that as part of the justification for a, a land use map change, I think it's also, I think we're also looking at, at actually at a plan change and maybe staff, you know, is aware of that and thought about that, but, you know, because that's pretty strong language in the small area plan from 10 years ago, and we just should, we shouldn't overlook it. So, I mean, I have other comments about sort of some of the smaller details, I mean, you know, I, it'd be great if there was affordable, affordable units on, assuming we get past the land use issues of, of the comp plan issues, if there's, you know, affordable onsite, you know, I think would be, this is the kind of project where some, some, some of that might be great to see. But, you know, I think before we even get to that and some of the stuff in transition to Virginia Village, you know, from 10 stories to two stories and, and justifying the, you know, the, the bonus in the SE, at least for me, I think we need to get, come to consensus on the, the bigger picture stuff, but, but yeah, so that's kind of my first reaction to it. I mean, you know, otherwise, I mean, I like the idea of the park and the rolling road, you know, transformation, you know, that's a, I think that would be fantastic. It's an underutilized, you know, asset that just, you know, hasn't done anything for the city. Something like that would be great. So there are, there are elements here that I think are, are very good. You know, I have some concerns about how well the retail would do, you know, some of that interior retail space, it doesn't have a lot of visibility from either street, and I think we've seen along this corridor of Maple, you know, some retail has struggled. You know, like at Pearson, we just lost Target, and that might be a different, there, there are different reasons for that, but anyway, so those are kind of like, you know, more specific comments, but, you know, I think the big, at this point, I think the big picture stuff is what I'm most wrestling with.
Commissioner Weiss?
Yes to that and to everything else, including the fact that it is a really exciting project. I fully agree with the fundamental issue that we need to wrestle with. But thank you for proposing a, a project that's lead gold with tremendous park space. I mean, it's a really nice design, and I spend a lot of time in that area these days, so I do appreciate, especially the, the pedestrian promenades. Just a couple more specific questions and aligned with a lot of our, what's already been said. Just a smaller question on the, the EV parking, you know, the Biden administration now has a goal of 50% EV by 2030. I think market projections are something like 40% of sales, so I'm just sort of more broadly, I don't know how appropriate it is for this particular context, but it is curious to me that we keep seeing proposals come in with, with 15% conduit, you know, conduit for 15% of spas being EV when it doesn't match up with what I'm seeing in the market. So that's just sort of point one, is that enough? I think another sort of bigger picture, I guess more aligned with what's happening in this area is, I want to underline what Mr. Hyra said earlier, which is, you know, we just saw a picture of the building, but this part of town really needs a lot of help in this, that space, that whole sort of contiguous area reads as sort of a, a jumbled and confusing mess to be maybe a little too derogatory, but, and this would be a significant change. change. So I think it would be very helpful for us to see the building in context. What's next to it on either side? What does that whole stretch of South Washington and Maple look like with this? And then similarly, I, you know, this might come out with a, a TDM, but I'd like to sort of understand, we've been making some nice changes as a city along South Washington, more crosswalks, you know, the, the, the bus stop that's happening across, I can't remember what it's called.
The Intermodal Plaza?
Yes, thank you. You know, we all have that right turn into the Target or whatever will replace the Target. I'm sort of curious about how all of the changes that we've made so far, that broader transportation context will work, are working and are being impacted. Now, how is that right turn off of South Washington into the Target working? Is that successful? Is it not successful? You know, what have we learned about what's going on in that area so far? Then I guess the last point I wanted to make is just sort of thinking about the, the climate resilience of this. I think there's a lot of real positives with the green roof, the park. It's really terrific. You know, you're mentioning stormwater and I think a lot of this greenery will contribute to heat island effect too, although that, that, you know, big 10-story building with, I think it will contribute to heat island effect for sure. So I'd like, sort of like to understand better how that might work. And I really want to understand stormwater too. Like there's that undergrounded, what is it, Trips Run right there too. I am sure that anything is probably better than the current state, but I'd be, because that's typically what happens with development, but I'm sort of interested in understanding, like, how are we thinking about stormwater in this area that I think is, my understanding is, I think is particularly more likely to get wet? So, that's my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Friedlander?
Thank you. I, I have to say, it's really hard to go after everybody because my whole list is now dwindled down to a few things. So I do want to, I do want to thank you very much for, for seeing some of the perspectives and, and also the, the commentary about the massing. I think it's important to look at those perspectives in context with the adjacent properties to kind of see how we're addressing, especially the residential zone, which is not going to change anytime soon. I mean, these other areas that are closer on either side, those could change over time, but it would still be important to kind of see that and see in the plans that you show when it's stepping back to keep a consistent model of where the roof line is stepping back and you see the roofs below so that you can see that transition in plan to kind of see how much it's really stepping back. Because it's really hard to see that from the, from the perspective views at this stage. And, and I do appreciate you coming at this stage. It's really great to be able to see it in its infancy and kind of watch it develop. And I think we will, through the dynamic tension of all the differing boards and commissions that have different interests, I think it will come out to be a much stronger project in the end. And I've seen that happen with, with a couple of projects in the city. Let's see. So with that, I would like to see more, more sustainability features to kind of leap a little bit closer to Silver, especially for a, a project this, of this scale in nature and in this particular area of the city. I think it's possible to do. I do, I see a lot of the, the landscaping, I love it, the plaza and the pedestrian linkability across from Washington to Maple. I think you, you have a great opportunity there to, to really capitalize on, on limiting the permeability or allowing more permeability, but also to introduce a, a really strong roof, green roof to mitigate the heat island effect of that tall structure as well. And let's see, in terms of, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, just humor me for a minute for more of the architectural side of things, to kind of get back to the idea of how to bring people into that space for the retail and the restaurant areas, it'd be great to see a little bit more transparency in that facade. I like what you're doing with that podium to kind of open it up, but I think that will really pull pedestrians in when they can really see activity going on in that lower floor that they want to be a part of. And to bring them into that park from both Washington and South Maple and Annadale, I think it will really allow people to see that there's more going on back there behind all that landscaping as well. Let's see, and I talked about the perspectives and shadow studies I saw are coming, which will be helpful to kind of see what, you know, summertime and wintertime with the full shade, where that park and how that park is affected by the building as well as the adjacent properties. I would like to echo the, the concerns about the policy change. I think that is kind of a big deal, but I think we're also seeing that commercial is struggling in that area, it appears. So I do like the use that is being proposed and I like the mix of having the medical office space in conjunction with that use. It'd be important to also see that affordability component be part of this particular structure so that, you know, as you're aging, if, if you're in an affordable dwelling unit and you want to age in place, you no longer really have an option, right? It would be important to have that option here in, in this development rather than it going to a coffer for, for an adjacent project. And I believe that is all I have. That hasn't already been covered. I appreciate all the commissioners and boards and commissions commentary as well. Thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing it come back.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, I've got a few comments too. I've been crossing items off my list as we've been going down the road here. So thanks for, my colleagues, for, for good comments. I just want to confirm, Mr. Stoddard, that the role for the planning commission, if I understand correctly, is we will have a recommendation to make to city council on the special exception application. And then later on down the road, we will have a role in the site plan.
Correct. You'd have two recommendations to the council at this point. One would be on the comprehensive plan change as well as on the special exception.
Right.
So that, that would be sort of a double advisory capacity at this stage. And then you're correct that if the project is approved for the comp plan and the special exception, you would see it then as the, as the deciding authority on the site plan.
Good. I just want to confirm that. Just a couple of things, just comments and maybe a question or two here. Regarding the alternatives to car travel, I, I'd like to see partnerships where possible to achieve alternatives on travel. So it's partnering with discounted trips for Metro, CarShare, scooters and so forth. That could be a kind of a creative way to get people out of their cars. I think I read somewhere in the documents that the plan is to have the units, the residential units be all electric. Does that include hot water as well?
Yeah, actually there's going to be, I believe there's a backup for the hot water boiler that's going to be gas-fired. All appliances in the, all appliances in the units will be electric. But the, the, yeah, the boiler for the hot water heater will be gas as would be the commercial kitchens for the restaurants. But other than that, they will all be electric appliances.
Good. I'd certainly encourage that. I'm hoping that the council, city council will include some kind of incentives. I'm not sure exactly where it would go to ensure that the retail opens up alongside with the residential so we don't have the situation that we faced with Founders Row Two where there's an extensive delay in the opening of the commercial spaces. On Fairfax Street, I think that's great what you're proposing. That's a kind of a neglected piece of city property there at the moment, but are there any intended use restrictions on that once it's re-renovated?
Do you mean in terms of hours of operation use? I'm not.
Yeah, anything that the developer might impose on, on public use of.
I don't know if we've gotten that far in terms, in terms of rules. I don't think we've developed those yet.
Okay. All right. Well, obviously where I'm, be going with that is, I hope there aren't. I was, I'm not sure where, and you've got the slide up that has, that shows where the green is. I'm trying to visualize what's there today. I wonder if you could remind me what, what's on that space where the green is today. Is there anything that has to be removed from there or?
No. It's, today, the entirety of this is pervious. There, it's, it's all surface parking lot where the green is today, the surface parking lot. There are three buildings in the center, whoops, in the center of this, and maybe I should go back to the first slide. Or, I'm sorry, one more, two more. But there's the application property today and you can see it's, it's pretty much all surface parking.
Just parking lot, yeah.
And the, and the three office buildings.
Okay. I'm just follow up on or echo Commissioner Weiss's comment on the conduit for the future electric vehicles of the 15%. Last project we had, Founders Row Two, actually had 50%. But what I'm not sure about is since this is a rental building, I'm just curious if you know, and this may be too detailed of a question at this point, but let's say you're, you do the 15%. A few, and from a few years from now, you've got interest in use of the electric charging stations that, that bumps up against that 15%. And so now you've got new users saying, hey, I'd like an electric charger. Because it's a rental building, would the developer have to comply with, with that request from, you know, that exceeds the 15% regardless?
I don't know if you, I don't know if we know the answer to that right now, but that would be something that would be market-driven at the time.
Yeah. I'm just trying to figure out how iron of a wall that, that 15% number is or whether there's basically going to be a commitment from the developer to install a charger if that's what, you know, demand, you know, leads to down the road.
Yeah. I mean, I would have to imagine that it would, they would try to meet demand. Whether or not it would be free of charge, free of use to the residents, I don't know.
Sure. Well, presumably there'd be some kind of an appropriate charge there for it, but that may take some of the pressure off of, you know, how, how fine-tuned that 15% number should be. If there's a commitment there to meet the demand as it, as it develops, you know, I think that would be the, the main concern. So that's all I had. So unless there are any other follow-up questions or comments.
Just a quick question for staff.
Sure, go ahead.
For, I don't know, Mr. Stoddard or Ms. Arsenault, I mean, Paul, you heard what I mentioned before, they've asked for a land use map change, but I mean, does staff need to consider a more significant change to the comp plan? If it's completely at odds with the recommendation of the small area plan to change the map, how could we recommend changing the map? I mean, I don't know. And I, maybe Mr. Stoddard or Ms. Arsenault can comment on that. If staff is looking at that, does there need to be a more significant comp plan change in order to, in order to actually make this happen if that's the consensus that the city wants this to happen?
Sure. One thing that, that may just be worth clarifying, the, the comprehensive plan change is not actually for the entire project site, it's only for a portion of it. The, the project today is composed of three separate parcels, two of which are already planned for mixed use in the future land use map. It's only the, the third parcel. And actually staff had encouraged the applicant to, to incorporate the third parcel so that they could provide a more complete site design. We break, I think, some of this down in the staff report that there are a lot of different goals that are expressed in the small area plan in terms of site design, housing affordability, the, the urban design of the street, the, the ground floor retail spaces. I think, so I think a lot of those goals are there, whether it meets sort of each one of them as it's written on the page, I'm not sure. But I think what staff is trying to do as we look at it is, is sort of look at the plan guidance as a whole. And I think we want to, we're trying to take it on sort of the, the merits of the whole.
Okay.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. Looks like Mr. Snyder, you are in a hands-up position if you'd like to.
Yes, thank you. With regard to the comp plan, one thing that the commission might want to consider and perhaps the applicant as well, if we're going to turn a poorly utilized paved street into a greenway for pedestrians, bicyclists and park space, changing that on the map to reflect a greenway might be an appropriate change to the plan. That is public space that would be developed by this project into a better public space and it would not be a tired asphalt street. So that might be a positive to think about because these pedestrian park-type connections are really important and not very many in the city. So I just throw that out for the commission and the applicant to think about.
Anything else? Doesn't look like it, so I believe we are at the end of this item. I want to thank the development team again and staff for, I think, giving us an excellent launch on this project tonight. And also thanks to any of the, the board and commission members who might still be listening. We appreciate your, your involvement as well. So thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. So I believe we can move ahead here. We can race past number five speaker series. We don't have a speaker tonight. So question to you, Mr. Trainer, is do we have any petitions or requests to speak tonight?
We do. We have one member in the audience.
I just want to make sure.
I just made sure your mic is on.
You're a little low. Is the mic on?
Ah, that green light.
How you sound great.
The one that turns red. Because that one's not here either. And, and that was the night you guys voted on T-Zones. And I went home and I was trying to pack for a trip and I was still listening and I heard something get said. And this is really what brought me to you guys tonight. Someone was worried that it would be a problem if we rejected what the council proposed in terms of the message it would send. And that sort of really perked up my ears. And so I wanted to kind of get back in here and reiterate to you guys that that is, you guys, several of you have pointed out that our planning commission operates very differently than other planning commissions in the area, that, that we just don't have the, I'm going to say leverage that some of them do. But it is your place to reject a bad idea and I want to reiterate that. And right after that comment was made, someone, someone stepped in and said, well, you know, I don't want to reject this because the goals that are on the face of this proposal are the goals that, that we embrace. And in fact, everybody that has talked about those things, embraced those goals. But I don't know that those are necessarily the goals that, that this thing is really trying to pursue. So what I'm really just trying to ask you guys to have is the right attitude, the right, I don't know, perspective on what your role is. I really do want you guys to push back when you're not seeing what you really think that this thing is trying to achieve. You and I were talking just before the meeting started. What little effort there is to actually put affordable housing into this thing is being washed out. This has never been about affordable housing. We, I think tonight, are going to see the first proposal in those T-Zones. It has no housing in it. Housing has always been, I don't know, kind of a cover. And so I just want you guys to be in the position that you should be as planners, as the planning commission, to have the leverage, not to be reactionary, but if you have to reject something, then reject it. If you have to rewrite it from the ground up, get staff to do that for you. Make it do what you guys want it to do. Be the planning commission. Plan for us. Protect us. Because I'm not sure that's what we're really seeing with some of these things that say they're trying to do one thing, but God help me, they feel like they're trying to do something else. And so I just wanted to, I don't know, I, I, that one just really caught my ears when I heard it and I really wanted to come back and, and give that to you. I radically appreciate how late you guys are going to be here tonight, how late you guys are here twice a month. And, and I, I want you to get what you should get for the time you're investing in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I believe we can move on to the Pearson Square Special Exception Amendment. So our, this is coming back to us from a previous work session that we had a few weeks ago. So, Mr. Stoddard, is there an introduction you'd like to make to this item?
I would. Thank you Chair and members of the commission. So this is the, this is an amendment to the, to the previously approved Pearson Square project, which is constructed and occupied. You all had seen this previously as part of a work session. This is now before you, for your final consideration, your action tonight is a recommendation back to council. Staff is recommending, I think, a, a positive recommendation on the changes as we've sort of worked through some of the discussions with the, the applicant on, of course, the, the residential spaces above as well as the, the commercial spaces on the ground floor. With that, I'll turn it over to our case planner on this, Jeff Hollen.
Hello, planning commissioners. I'm Jeff Hollen with the planning staff. Planning Commission has requested to hold a public hearing on a special exception amendment application to modify commercial restrictions in the Pearson Square Building. The purpose of this amendment is to raise the limits for overall retail square footage put in place by a previous special exception resolution. put in place by a previous special exception resolution. This item is also scheduled for a public hearing and final consideration by the city council during their next meeting on Monday, April 24th. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed motion. As included in the staff analysis section, the proposed special exception amendment is generally consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and substantially achieves the goals of the special exception criteria in the city's zoning ordinance. Line 24 of the staff report includes a comment response table that summarizes main topics from the March 1st work session, as well as applicant or staff responses to those comments, most of which I will touch on shortly. But to summarize the application, this is taking place at 410 South Maple Avenue, also known as Pearson Square, not to be confused with the Tax Analyst Building next door. Pearson Square contains 230 multifamily residential units and approximately 19,000 square feet of ground floor retail commercial space. The applicant is requesting a special exception amendment to increase the retail services, service uses allowed above the current restrictions. The applicant is seeking to lease approximately 1,600 square feet of currently vacant space to a architectural firm. In summary, this application consists of three changes to the commercial plan and then two additional changes to their VCs. First, of the total 19,000 square feet of commercial space, increase, they were looking for an increase the overall, to the overall retail, I'm sorry, retail service uses and/or business and professional uses, they are looking to increase it from 11,000 square feet to 13,000 square feet. They are also looking to increase the business or professional office uses limit from 2,400 square feet to 4,000 square feet. They are also looking to increase the existing maximum lease term from 10 years to 20 years for business, professional, medical, or dental office uses. And then the two additional changes that would be made to the VCs that I had mentioned earlier, one would be in the event of the Creative Cauldron leaving their space, the applicant has offered to offer a six month term in which the applicant will only market the space currently occupied by Creative Cauldron to artistic and creative purposes. And then they have also included within the VCs a list of prohibited uses to put Pearson Square in line with more recent mixed use developments approved throughout the city. On line 86 of the staff report, I include the exact language change being proposed by this application, which would be taken from the 2012 approval resolution and added to the developments list of VCs. This was included for you last time in the staff report, but starting on line 162, staff has included a history of the project's building program, starting in 2004, and the changes made over time up until the 2012 resolution that's being amended by this application. Let's see, at the, at the previous work session, staff had not completed their review of the initial submission. The applicant resubmitted documents following the city council referral and the planning commission's first work session. Since then, staff reviewed the latest submission, which was received on March 23rd, 2023. In reviewing, well, in reviewing these materials, we find that the, that it is a narratively narrow request, a relatively narrow request, to amend previously approved mixed use projects. Lines 253 through 354 of the report outline staff analysis of the application against the primary and secondary SE criteria, and describes how we arrived at the determination of general compliance with the zoning code. As I mentioned before, the applicant proposed amendment does not change the commercial program's overall consistency with the comprehensive plan and South Washington Street Small Area Plans objectives and strategies. While it can't count towards the SE criteria compliance, it's worth noting that the applicant has informally agreed to work with the city and meet, to discuss possible options for the extension of ADU terms in order to remain consistent with community affordable housing objectives. As for fiscal impact, the positive fiscal, fiscal impact of approximately, I think this is a typo, 1,600 square feet of occupied retail sales space is approximately $13,800 annually. The positive fiscal impact of the same square footage as office use is approximately 9,100 annually, a decrease of approximately 4,700 or 34%. And also, it's worth noting that the subject space has been vacant for more than, also another typo, I believe, two, more than two years, so the actual revenues have been lower than what is modeled. And then lastly, as for timing, we do have the public hearing tonight on this item, and then on Monday is the city council scheduled public hearing for this item. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Stevens. We do have the applicant team, and I am also here to answer questions as well as Gary Fuller. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before I open it up to the public for any comments, let's see if there's any comments from the planning commissioners. Anybody have anything they want to say about this item? Commissioner Weiss, I know you had some issues with the, kind of the explanation of the square footage, I don't know whether it's, what is proposed here resolves that for you or not?
I think it's more than resolved, I think it's actually answered, and I guess my comment on that is, I don't know if it was a mistake, or I don't know what happened last time, but I think this is much clearer, and I guess my ask is to try harder to get it right the first time. I mean, 1,600 versus, there was just, there was, I think, a math problem, or something went wrong with the square footage, and it would just be nice to know that we're seeing accurate square footage changes from the start. And I appreciate the change to what's happening with Creative Cauldron, but that wasn't contemplated or addressed really at all in the first, the first time we saw this. So I, I think those are important issues that should be addressed before it comes to us.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners have comments on this item? Seeing none, I think it'd be appropriate if we open the floor at this point to see if there's any public comments on this item. Mr. Trainer, do we have anybody online or otherwise speaker slip on this item?
None.
Seeing none, we'll close the item to any public comments, and one of the commissioners would like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, hi, Jeff. The applicant is here and does have a brief presentation, if that's all right with you all?
Can we wave it?
Yeah.
Unless, unless they really want to give it.
Okay, good.
I do have a question, actually, if we're back to us now, which is what does, I'm glad to see that we're marketing, that this will be marketed, that the Creative Cauldron space in the event that they leave, which they will, that there will be a good faith effort to market this to an arts and education tenant for six months? That seems like a short period of time, just given what's going on at the market, but I understand the commercial imperative. I guess, is, do we know, is there any effort to start finding a new organization now? And what does good faith for six months look like? What does that mean?
Just to clarify, is that a question for staff or the applicant?
I guess it really is more of a staff, a question for our applicant.
Sure.
Thank you for the question. My name is Zach Williams, Milan East Attorney with Venable, representing the owner of Pearson Square. So the way that we designed this condition or concession is that the six month period does not start until the space is vacant. And so, I'm sure as you might expect, typically, marketing would begin before a space is vacant. So, the idea here is that, you know, instead of starting that period from when, you know, we know that the lease is ending, it's really from vacancy, so that ensures that there will be a minimum of a six month period. But it's probably going to be more than that because, you know, even if you started marketing on day, you know, you know, day one of the seventh month, you're not going to find a tenant for some time. So, we expect the owner will be looking for those types of tenants as soon as it looks like Creative Cauldron is going to leave.
Okay, okay. All right, would someone like to go ahead and make a motion?
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I was here at the work session back on March 1st, it was, and I think I said at the time that, you know, this was consistent with another, we just did something similar at the Byron, and I think, you know, again, we don't take it lightly that we're adjusting these restrictions, but times do change, the Pearson Square was part of that earlier batch of mixed use projects, and some of the restrictions on retail have proven difficult. And I think the rental history for these, this building and the others, you know, are what, it's not just, you know, an owner saying, you know, I just want this change to make my, you know, make my life easier, it's, it's, they really were suffering and trying to find tenants to fill the space, and I think it's in the best interest of the city to have storefronts and ground level space that's occupied, as opposed to having for-rent signs and vacant windows that, you know, sometimes goes on for months and months, in some cases, years. And I think that's been the case on this site. So with that, and I think the other issues have been addressed, so with that, I will make the motion. Again, this is the matter of resolution to amend the commercial use restrictions on the ground floor spaces in the Pearson Square Building, resolution to amend 2012-01. So whereas, an application to amend the previously approved special exception resolution for the Pearson Square Building at 410 South Maple to expand the allowable commercial uses on the ground floor, commercial units, has been filed by Zachary Williams on behalf of Comref Pearson Square LLC, the owner of the commercial units, the applicant, pursuant to section 48-488 subsection 2, in conformance with the procedure set forth in section 4890 of the city code. And whereas, at its regular meeting on February 27, 2023, the council formally referred the special exception amendment to the planning commission for its review and recommendation. And whereas, the planning commission finds that the proposed amendment generally satisfy, proposed amendment generally satisfies the primary, satisfies, the primary and secondary criteria in the zoning code for consideration of special exception applications, including conformance with the comprehensive plan and the applicable small area plan. Now therefore, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of TR 23-06 to city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Trainer, would you like to call Rove?
Ms. Friedlander?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Pointez?
Yes.
Mr. Hyra?
Yes.
Ms. Comott?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Let me put a question to my fellow commissioners here. Do we want to tackle rules of procedure, remote participation policy and minutes tonight, or do we want to defer those to our next meeting? Any strong feelings? I hear one for deferral.
I'm fine either way, it's fine.
Make that two. Mr. Stoddard, is that okay for us to go ahead and defer those items to our next meeting?
Yeah, we're successfully removing, meeting remotely tonight, so there's no pressing need to act on them.
Great. All right, well, that brings us back to another work session item, which is the Oak Place Site Plan. So this is a work session, so we won't be deciding anything tonight.
Did you want to take a motion on your minutes from March 15th?
Oh, I was going to include that in deferral.
Sure, we can do that too.
Again, unless there's a overwhelming desire to look at that tonight. So, we can move on then to the Oak Place Site Plan. Is there a introduction from staff?
There is. So thank you, Mr., thank you Chair Stevens and members of the commission. The item before you tonight is an application for site plan as well as some variances. It is an application for a new daycare facility at the corner of Park and Oak Streets. This is your first work session on the item, the application, the, the applications before you, the roles of the planning commission, it's a site plan application on which you all have the deciding authority on that. Also included in the proposal is a application for variances for both the lot coverage as well as front yard setbacks. Your role on variances is advisory to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which holds the final authority on variance applications. The case planner for this one is Henry Zhang, and he's with us tonight, and he can provide a presentation on the application, and the applicant is also here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning commission. My name is Henry Zhang, principal planner with the planning. Item 8A in front of you is a detail, excuse me, is a site plan for daycare center for children. The planning commission is requested to hold a work session on the three related applications tonight, variances, site plans, subdivision for the proposed 12,000 square feet Oak Place redevelopment at the corner of Park and North Oak Street. Staff has identified eight items for the commissions to consider. On line 18, it basically is the variance from the front yard sit back. This site is a corner lot, according to the zoning ordinance, there's two frontage, basically along Oak Street and Park Avenue, and which required a minimum 15 feet sit back. The site plan proposed does not meet that sit back, and then the applicant did not request it either, so this applicant either revised site plan to show conformance with the front yard sit back, or applies for additional variances. Item number two is the interior parking lot landscaping, since the site of the, I mean, the site, excuse me, of the surface parking lot is larger than 3,400 square feet, 3,420 square feet in size, therefore, they need 5% of the parking lot to be interior planting areas. And then they didn't ask for that, so this may be another waiver. Landscaping in general, number three, basically, they're going to remove old onsite, you know, mature shade trees, and then they only provided like four shade trees as new shade tree, and then staff leave additional shade tree should be provided. Building, they only provide two elevations, section 20, excuse me, 48-1137, which is the submitted requirement of the site plan, or required all the floor size elevation to be provided. And then therefore, they need to provide details of the other elevations, include the design, material, and other architecture features. Alongside this missing site plan information, they still need to provide the details of site, assigned details, excuse me, number five. They only show one building mounted sign on the, on the gable of the elevation front in Oak Street, and then they don't have a detail in term of lighting, in term of material, and how the sign will be fixed to the building. And those are the detail required by the submission requirement. And then like the other things, like trash enclosure and bicycle parking details, they all missing. On line 50, it's a parking reduction. This side basically need 98 parking spaces, a total of 31, including 19 on the side and 12 offside, basically proposed. The city's zoning ordinance allow them to request parking reduction along with the site plan, so they, they did request it, but not provide enough evidence, you know, for example, the city zoning ordinance require like documents such as TDM be provided, and then nothing be provided. Staff also provide a comparison, however, on line 265 to 270, basically compare our parking requirements for the daycare center. parking requirements for the daycare center with the other jurisdiction. And then we found that the parking required front of the city, which related to the building square footage, is way too high. That means if the whole site be provided for parking, surface parking, they can only provide, they can only provide maybe approximately 40 spaces. So our standards in current zoning code is way too high. Lastly, another waiver probably be needed because there is a requirement that commercial entrance, access to the commercial side should not be within 100 feet of the R district. And then in this case, the access will be provided from the North Oak Street, which is about 50 feet from the R district across the street. And then therefore, another waiver probably will be needed. Move forward, line 79, the proposed development will recall five land use action to be taken. Started from line 79, basically a detailed site plan will be needed because there, the size of development and disturbance of the, of the, of the site. They needed to have a subdivision approval. Basically, that's under the subtitle 38 because they're going to consolidate two existing parcels for this site, which consisting of five lots. Number three is basically the variance, as we mentioned, as I mentioned, excuse me. There is a lot coverage variance requested because in this T1 transitional zone, maximum lot coverage is at 40%. And this development basically need 52% of lot coverage. And on top of this, as I mentioned, that we have a possible variance from the front, both front, along the Oak and, and Park Avenue. And then this will be needed in the next submittal. And as Mr. Stoddard mentioned earlier, that the BZA will need to approve this one with the recommendation from the Planning Commission. Moving forward, I mean, down to the list of the, the fourth land use action will be the waivers I mentioned. One is the commercial entrance waiver needed. And then the other waivers include, buffer yard, they already requested two waivers along the both property adjacent to the hotel property. But additional waiver need to be provided for the interior landscaping. The last is about parking reduction. As I stated previously, 98 required and 31 provided. And then the city zoning ordinance, section 48, 969 to 48, 972, allow them to do a reduction along with the approval of the site plan. Keep moving to line 127, which basically listed all the site plan review criteria, basically from line 130 specifically to line 166. Moving to line 168, basically comprehensive plan and the small area plans of the city calls for redevelopment, parcel consolidation, and the strengthening of the existing commercial retail uses in the corridor areas where the site is located. The comp plan and air plan also provide a specific guidance on the design of the site. For example, the site, new development adjacent to Park Avenue need to be very sensitive to adjacent existing residential building. And then in this case, the daycare is proposed in a two-story building, which you see from the elevation, the two only elevation we have, we can see they're pretty much in a residential style of the building with an average 35 feet in building height, which is within the building height permitted in the T1 zone, which is 45 feet. Further down to the variance review, the state changed the variance definition and approval criteria back to 2015. And then we're going to review that according to the state criteria because our zoning code has not been updated and actually way in the middle trying to update those criteria. By the new definition of the variances, the reduction in the minimum parking space required, I mean, this request cannot be approved as a variance. Actually, the applicant proposed a variance request for this parking reduction, so it will not be able to approve under the variance criteria. But however, however, the lot coverage and the possible front yard sitback will be needed to be approved for this development if they're going to move it forward. Next steps, sorry, I'm almost done. Next step is that we are expecting a complete submittal, submittal number two, in the mid-May. And then after that, Planning Commission will have a second work session. And since we have variance included, so Planning Commission need two public hearing. One is for variance, make recommendation to the BZA. And then the BZA will take the final action on the variances. And then Planning Commission will need a second public hearing to finally approve the site plan with variance requested. That's all I have for this presentation, and thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we want to go to any possible presentation from the developer? I see they have their team here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. And is this on? Can you hear me? Yep, okay. Good evening, my name is Bob Young. I live at 608 Timber Lane in Falls Church. We have a short presentation, wanted to show you some things, elevations principally. Jack, are you set? Good. This is a very modest project, 12,000 square feet, two floors for a daycare center, which is badly needed in the city. Next slide. This is kind of a sketch site plan showing you how, this is only a 15,500 square foot site. There are two existing homes that have been used as legal offices for 35 or 40 years. So we're proposing to demolish them and build, as I said, this rather modest building. Next slide. Wanted to be able, I don't know if you can see it. Do they have a handout? Jeff?
We have the, we have it on our screens.
Okay, all right. So you can see basically a brick base with siding on the rest of the building. As I said, we're trying to make it as modest as can be. Next slide. Again, more elevations. This is east from Oak Street. Next elevation. These are all four of the elevations as requested by staff. This building actually will be shorter in height than the houses across the street for the most part. Next slide. I won't read these. As you can see, we think this is a pretty reasonable project, a needed use, and a rather modest building. I'd like to be able to address the various points that staff has made, if you want me to do that, or answer questions. Whatever you think, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, if you have replies in mind, I'm sure we would get to it from our own questions. But if you want to go ahead and share what you know.
Let me start with front yard setbacks. As I've said, this is a very small site. We think it's important that we comport with the built environment. I would point out that the house directly across Park from this property is 10 feet from the, the face of curb. The house across Oak, again, diagonally across from this site, I believe, is 12 feet from the face of curb. As you go on down the street, you'll see the spectrum condominiums facing on Park are similarly 15 feet from face of curb, which is basically where we are. We think it's a reasonable request. Again, comporting with the built environment, this building will not be looming over anything. So on the interior parking lot landscaping, we'd like to suggest that the part of the parking that's uncovered, we can't landscape under the building. And the part of the parking lot that is uncovered is far below 3,400 square feet. So obviously, we're doing planting out there, but makes no sense to park, to plant under the, all of the area available outside is being planted. As you, you'll see in our new submission, I don't know if we have it, we don't have a, do we have one? Yeah. Can, Jack, can you put that rendering up of the landscaping with?
Just the one that was submitted today?
Yes. As you can see here, we've added some trees and we will exceed 15% at the 10-year mark with these trees. We'd love to save the ones that are there. They're pretty old at this point. They're tangled up with power lines, and in some cases, not in great shape. Building elevations, we've shown you those. Sign details is, in our view, pretty premature. We'll certainly get them, but we have kind of bigger issues to deal with besides the sign plan itself. In our next submission, we'll certainly be putting in the details on the trash enclosures and the bike parking, which we, I think we have some of that up on this elevation. On the reduction in parking, I'm sure you all would agree that 90-some odd parking places is a bit absurd. I would point out that the proposed new parking regulations in Fairfax County suggest two parking places per 1,000 square feet, which would be, in our case, 24 spaces. I think we're offering 30 or 31, which according, this is a national daycare outfit, and they have a huge amount of experience. They've told us that they require, I think, 28 spaces, so we're a bit over that. We think it'll be more than adequate. Finally, the waiver on the commercial driveway. Some of you may recall, going back quite a few years, that when we developed the Hilton Garden Inn, that was also an issue that had to be resolved. And that driveway, which exists today, was approved. I would point out that we're across the street from residential, but the residential is St. James Church and a huge parking lot. So it's probably not too offensive to the neighbors. Let me stop there and happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions for either staff or the developer, planning commissioners? Go ahead, just jump in. I don't think we need to be quite so formal on this item. If you have a question, go ahead and ask.
Public health?
I think it's just a work session for us.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that. I do want to ask a few more questions just about the setbacks. I question, especially looking at the landscaping here, I'm questioning the viability of trees, especially with a tighter setback along Park Avenue. I question whether or not they're actually going to be able to mature.
I'll just come up.
This is Karen White.
With Walter Phillips. So the, the street trees shown are in the six-foot landscape strips, which is the city standard. So that's where we're showing them. There, there, we are not showing any large trees along the building face, if that's what, if that's what area you're talking about. Those are more shrubs. I think that's a four, like a four-foot, like, building planting zone, we'll call it. So those wouldn't be any canopy trees. Those would just be ground planting shrubs. The canopy trees will be in the, along the street tree, along the street landscape strip and would be 10 feet from the building.
Well, just one point of clarification, in the city's T zones, the setback requirements are calculated from the property line. Typically, when, when the commission's reviewing special exception applications, that's along broader Washington where it's calculated from the face of curb. So here, the, the setback is actually deeper than what they're requesting from the property line. And I, and I think that's where those extra dimensions come in. So when you zoom in on the plan sheet, you'll see that the cross-section for the planting area and the sidewalk is actually wider than you would otherwise think. And that's just a function of how T zones dictate setback calculations.
And one thing I, just to add to that, so the streetscape standards say 16 feet for the streetscape here, which we are providing. So we are 16 feet from the curb here.
Okay. All right.
That helps perspective.
Thank you. I do have another question about the overall surface runoff that compared to what's there, it looks like we're adding more parking. Is there a possibility to put in like permeable pavers or something to allow for, especially since a lot of that parking is under the building as well?
Well, what we've, well, I don't think we really can do permanent pavement under the building, but what we've looked at is an underground system. And on this project, unlike some of the other ones, we had, we do have more surface area, like we're saying. So we are, we do have inlets, which, sorry, aren't shown on here, but you know, inlets to collect that runoff from the parking lot. And then they're all taken to an underground system that filters and stores the water. And that's all under the, the play area that's next to the right of the building that all outfalls in there. So we're not proposing any permanent pavement at this time, but we are definitely collecting all that, we're collecting all the roof drains and the surface parking lot to that system, filtering it, storing it, and then tying it out into Park Avenue.
Okay. Are there any concerns about just safety of that play area along that property line adjacent to the garage, the parking garage?
No, it will be fully fenced, and the only access will be through the daycare center, the building itself.
And, and
There won't be other access.
I guess it's, we're still in the preliminary phase. It would be good to know what, what that would look like as well.
Okay. Yeah, it'll, it'll be a board-on-board fence, but yeah, we'll be glad to provide that in our next submission. Let me point out that the current condition is that the water basically sheet flows into the garage of the Hilton Garden Inn. So this will be a vast improvement. A lot of it flows through the gutters along Park and along Oak. So it will leave, this project would relieve a lot of that water flow. And clean the water.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to jump in?
I'll jump in. Okay, well, I mean, there's a lot going on here. It's a small site, but you've certainly tried to pack in a lot in it. Maybe, maybe more than it can handle, perhaps. I mean, it's, I'm concerned with the I mean, it's, I'm concerned with the sheer number of variances, waivers, and modifications that are, that are being requested. I mean, the variance issue, I mean, I'll start at the top with the variance issue. I mean, variance law is pretty strict in the Commonwealth, and, I mean, the BZI is going to make the ultimate decision. You know, we'll have to, we'll chime in, but, you know, you got to show that there's a, that there's a hardship or that the, there's been essentially no reasonable use of the property, which is a pretty tall order on a commercial lot that's otherwise conforming with the T1 minimum lot area and width, and it actually has, it may not, it may not be the desired use on there today, but it's got two structures on there, it's had to use. So, I mean, that's a, that's a tough legal standard to meet, to get a variance for, you know, setback, and especially, and setback would be one thing if the lot was undersized. It's not undersized, technically. I don't think it is, anyway. Staff could correct me if I'm wrong. But, but for lot coverage, I mean, you know, the variance is not a tool that is a substitute for not liking the ordinance, or the ordinance being inconvenient, or the ordinance not allowing a particular project that one wants to have on a particular lot. Not every lot can accommodate every use at every level of density and every level of intensity, and so I'm very concerned that it just doesn't meet the variance standards for lot coverage or setback. You kind of have to show what a by right would look like. What would a by right setback and a by right lot coverage for daycare look like? I think you could accommodate a daycare. It might not accommodate 150 children, it might not be 12,000 square feet, but I think a daycare probably could fit there. And then you get to the parking, which isn't a variance, but, I mean, you're only providing 19 onsite. I guess you're showing some off-site parking with the, at, with the hotel, and I don't know if there'd be some kind of agreement. I mean, I think the problem with daycare, you know, daycare is the kind of use that while, you know, and again, what our neighbors provide is informative, and maybe we should look to update our code, but we still have to live with the code we have and try to, you know, we, but the site plan does allow some flexibility, I guess, to adjust that. Luckily, that's not a variance, but I feel that, you know, daycare is a high gen, high traffic generating use during peak hour. It's right across the street from a school. That's a very large school, by, at least by city standards. That also generates traffic, and I know their drop-off patterns, you know, they utilize that lot for drop-off and pickup, and there's a lot of traffic on Oak Street, there's through traffic on Oak Street that's coming through. People, you know, go from Broad Street up to Lincoln and, and beyond on Oak. So, it actually gets a fair amount of traffic for a little neighborhood street on that block. And as you well know, you have a building on that block already, you know it very well. But, so, that's a concern as far as, you know, again, having a 150-student child or, you know, daycare at that location on a site that's pretty tight. And so, you know, what, you know, I think I'd be concerned about, you know, parents saying the lot's too tight, there's not enough parking there, I'm just going to park on the street, the street gets pretty full, you know, it just creates a lot of chaos there. I think, you know, we'd want to, you know, I guess I'd want to know more about St. James' drop-off and pickup or schedule to see how this would fit with that, you know, and what the conflicts might be. I think there could be some conflicts there as far as that goes. So, I mean, those are all concerns I have about it, you know, from a big picture perspective. I mean, I, I don't have any problem with the daycare use. You're right, it's a by right use in T1. There is a need for daycare. You know, the St. James daycare around the corner on Spring Street, I think is pretty well utilized, and that's, that's a smaller daycare, I believe, but, so I know the use is needed, but I'm concerned it's just too much on this little site based on what's been proposed, and, and I don't know, you know, if it, how well it would work at that level of intensity. I think the play area is kind of small for, for the number of students or children that would be there. You know, I guess, you know, they couldn't all be there one time, and that's not typical anyway, but, you know, it's not a lot of outdoor play space, but, but anyhow, so that's kind of my concern from an overall level. I don't have a problem with the daycare use. I don't really even really have a problem with the design of the building. I mean, it is a little tall. I mean, to the peak of the roof, I think you're showing 45 feet. I guess the midpoint's at 37. But, I agree, it's, it's across from the church and, you know, the T-zone does allow for that, so, although, you know, ironically, we're, of course, we're in the process of reevaluating the T-zones. I think the city council's about to kind of restart that process next week, I think. I don't know if staff knows if that's like, next week, they're going to have a work session on that to kind of reissue that, but, but again, that's neither here nor there. You're looking for a by right use today, and that's fine. So, anyhow, that's kind of like my big picture concerns, that it might just be too much for the, for this little lot, as you've said, to, you know, to accommodate effectively. I mean, again, and I don't know, I know how you get over the variance hurdle. I mean, I guess the BZI will make the call on that, but I certainly, you know, since we have to make a recommendation, I mean, that would be my concern, that it just doesn't meet the variance criteria under Virginia code, but, you know, just because we, our ordinance is out of date in some ways, and our ordinance has some kooky things in there, but, you know, unfortunately, like, we're, until our council updates that, that's, that's our ordinance. And if we don't like it, doesn't mean you can just run to get a variance. We should, the councils do update the ordinance if we think that we were asking for too much parking, if we think we're not allowing enough lot coverage, and it's, it's a hardship. But, in this case, I just don't know if that, if it, if it meets that. So, anyway, I'll shut up, but that's, that's my initial observations.
Let me just respond on a couple of those things, if I may. If one looks at the proposed revisions to the T-zone, we're well below the 70% recommended for lot coverage. If you look at the recommendation for parking, I think we're well below the, is that right, Paul? The parking in the new T-zone?
So, the, the parking regulations for T-zones, we haven't talked about commercial parking ratios in the T-zone updates. I, I do want to flag on sort of parking, there is language in the code. Council did actually insert very permissive language for the planning commission to consider parking reductions as part of a site plan if it found that, and it's, it's a very broad finding, it's, it's sort of, if the commission finds that the, the parking requirements preclude what's otherwise a reasonable use, I think the comprehensive plan and small area plan analysis do talk to sort of the, you know, the need for uses that support nearby commercial, which could certainly include a daycare. It's certainly helpful for the office workforce to have access to a daycare. I think it is, one of the things we did flag, at least in our preliminary look at the variance requests, is that the site is somewhere around a third of an acre, and both of the, it's a corner lot, and, and both properties on either side are developed by the parking garage, and so there isn't room to squeeze the site back further. And obviously, each, each variance is looked at at its own merits, but what we have seen sort of smaller lot developments on T-zones, one of the more recent examples is the library. It was a little different because it was a renovation project, but there was a variance granted to actually project into the front yard setback, because there was a recognition that, you know, once the lots around you get bought or get developed, it can be difficult to fit within those restrictions. We did work with the library at the time to incorporate a generous landscaping panel on both sides of the street, and we worked with them to accommodate the 8A parking spaces actually off-site using street parking. So, I think there is a, there is a history, at least in the city, of trying to, to sort of make these site, these smaller sites work.
But a variance isn't always the right tool to do that.
Sure.
Because you got to, because you got to show that by right, you're limited to the point that you're not getting reasonable use of the property. I don't know. I mean, why could a daycare with 50 kids not fit here? I don't know. Maybe it could. I mean, I just haven't seen that. I mean, and ultimately, I feel like you'd need to show that, that the ordinance is so onerous that it's precluding reasonable use of the property if you had to follow. If you had to follow the by right and you had to meet all the requirements for the variance, I'm not talking about the site plan and the reduction in parking, if that can be done, you know, legislatively through a site plan or administratively, then, 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 fine. But, as far as the setback goes and the, and the coverage, and you said, right, they're considering changing the coverage, but it is, today, it is what it is. So, anyhow, that's, that's how I see it. I think you have to show that in order to meet a variance, to get a variance approval, but that's, you know, that's just my, my view as I read the state code, but.
Okay. Anyone else?
Let me just address one more issue on the, first of all, I think it's important to point out that the, the state has very rigorous regulations when it comes to daycare. One of those relates to the play area. It's not obvious, but there's a play area on the ground for the little ones, and the entire roof is a play area. It's proposed to be a play area.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Go, please.
I was going to ask, the 12 so-called off-site spaces, I was trying to figure out where those are located. Today, there's, there's, there's the Melnick office, and then there's a house. Are these 12 spaces where the house is today on the south end?
They're on the Hilton Garden Inn property.
Actually, in their garage, or?
In their garage.
I see. Okay.
When I developed that property and sold it, I retained the daytime, daytime usage of 26, I think, parking places in that stick of the parking garage that comes out on Oak Street.
Right.
So, we'd be using some of those.
Okay. And how do you envision the pickup and drop-off with parents? Where would that take place?
They would come in to the driveway on Park, I'm sorry, on Oak.
Yeah.
There are adequate parking places for them to park, walk the kids in, or the staff would really walk them in, and then they'd go back out.
Put it back up? I mean, would there be a possibility that there'd be more, more people arriving in vehicles than there are spaces there?
No, we've done a lot of research on that. First of all, St. James does most of their pickup, drop-off, rather, in the morning up on Spring Street in their parking lot up there. A little bit of it is on Oak, but very little, and there very early, around 7:00 or 7:30. The daycare is strung out between around, from around 8:00 to 10:00 for the drop-off in the morning, so it's not all at one time. In the evening, I watch every evening out of my window. They, St. James has, starts, starts at 3:00, and by 3:15, everybody's gone. The daycare center typically doesn't have any pickup to speak of until 5:00, so there's no conflict.
Right. You anticipate there'd be any cars backing up onto Oak Street to line up and pick up?
No. No, not at all.
I noticed that it almost looks like a brick sidewalk. Is that the intended?
Yes.
Application?
Yeah, we would like to conform to the streetscape to the extent we can.
And right now, you're proposing to remove all of the trees on the, on the property.
Yeah, unfortunately, between those who are tangled up in the lines, and there are also all kinds of easements under those trees on both frontages, we've done every, everything we can think of to save them, and we can. So, as I pointed out earlier, we'll be above 15% on the new trees being planted.
Anyone else? Jump in? Go ahead.
I'm glad to see something on this corner. I mean, it's a, it's a corner that really does need some attentions. Grim right now, the sidewalks on Oak Street are so bad, they're really unusable, so I'm glad to see that there's something happening here. We do need to work on the traffic drop-off. Very glad to see the parking, shared parking with the hotel. It's another underutilized parking lot we have in the city. I know there's plenty of spots in there. My big concern, though, is around the activation of the site, particularly is where Mr. Stutter was going, or Stevens was going, excuse me. You've got the entrance in the parking lot, right? So, it's an entirely auto-oriented project, right? There is, there's really no activation on the street because you've got the, it looks like you would have a nice entrance on Park, but it's not. The entrance is in the parking garage, so people are driving in, picking up kids, dropping them off, driving away, and nothing is going to be happening on the corners there. So, I don't know how it can happen, but I'd love to see something that actually results in more activity on the sidewalks as opposed to, right now, which is basically a drive-thru. I mean, that's, that's what it looks like to me. Don't know how that can be resolved, but that's a big, that's a big problem for me.
The neighbors may disagree with you. You know, the neighbors may disagree with you in the sense that they don't want a lot of activation, they want things as quiet as possible. They already have a lot of traffic.
I don't think a drive-thru will be, will be quiet.
Well, it's not a drive-thru, it's in and out.
Can I jump in? Because I think I'm going to have some comments that complement what you just said. So, thanks for the presentation. It's definitely rethinking some of our T-zones and how we can activate them and get development on them that's a little more sufficient than what's there now, I think is great. Especially, I would also say something, I'm sure you have this information or could bring it, but when you present, talk about the daycare needs in our town. I mean, I remember when I moved here eight years ago, we were on every waitlist, like, it didn't matter. I mean, all the daycares here, we couldn't get in. So, families just keep moving here and keep moving here, and I'm sure there is a demand. I don't know exactly what the demand is, but
It's huge.
Yeah, but you're asking for changes, you're asking for greater lot cover, I mean, you're, and you're asking for a lot of different things to be done to make this project doable. And I think, what I think I'm hearing from the commissioners is there needs to be more than just saying, "I'm going to provide a daycare." I think you know a lot of the interests of a lot of the commissioners and the city council members, and I don't see this project playing towards a lot of the interests, and one of the big interests is how to activate park, how to make park more bikable, more walkable. I think this project could provide some benefits to do that, which would signal to all the other T-zones that are going to be redeveloped in the future on this street. It also would signal to some of our council, it would signal to our city staff that there is a priority for park, and we're going to greenline projects that play into that priority. The priority is activate park, make it walkable, and Bob, you talked about, there's going to be some resistance, right? You just said, like, I don't know if the neighbors really want it to be activated, but I think there's a big push to activate it. So, there's a battle to be had here. I don't know if you want to get into that battle, but what I'm hearing is daycare increasing the lot coverage is not sufficient to get what you want. So, I would change this, alter this slightly, not a lot, probably won't cost that much money to try to activate park, but it might activate a lot of political opposition. I don't know, but it would maybe get opposition from some of the neighbors, but it probably would get more support from the commission, I think. I don't know. I'm not speaking for everybody, I'm just speaking to Rob, who just spoke, and I feel the same way. I know Dreah feels the same way about park, that it has to be activated, and we are trying to do things with, you know, the whole debate about the T-zones that we have just had. And just having development on the T-zones is not sufficient. We want other things. I think what you're hearing is just the daycare here is not sufficient because it will have spillover effects. It will lead to more traffic, it will lead to things, more people driving there. So, what are the other benefits that this development deal could, to give the city? And maybe it's giving some resources or activating the frontage in a way that encourages biking and a more pedestrian-friendly space. So, that, that's all my comments, but we, we need to do something here, and it's just a question of what and, and how does that fit into the other desires and needs that people want for the site and for the, for all of park?
Okay. Any other comments? I, I guess the one observation I would make, it sounds like from the staff report that there's an awful lot of work to be done as far as dotting the i's and crossing the t's and getting waivers and variances and so forth lined up to, to meet with the, the code. So, I don't know how much change that would make to another round of this, but hopefully you can all reach agreement on, you know, what, what's needed and to have it comply with what staff says is needed.
If I could, Mr. Chair, just to emphasize, right, it is, it is a site plan application, and so I think everything that has been talked about tonight in terms of the, the design, how it approaches the street, those are all well-grounded in the city's design guidelines and the comprehensive plan and the small area plan, and those are all required consistency checks for, for site plan applications. So, I think that everything that's been talked about is certainly fair game for sort of revisions to the application, but just to clarify, it is, it is a, it is a by right use in the T-zones today, and so I think if the, if the design challenges can be overcome and it can, and sort of meet the tests for site plans, variances, waivers, then it's, it's not a discretionary approval, it is, it is more on the line of a ministerial.
I think you're, Paul, I hate to interrupt you there, but you're getting ahead of yourself because, you know, I wouldn't gloss over the fact that you need multiple variances to, to make it happen. So, yes, if, if that happens, but
Sure.
I don't know. That's a big if, so.
Sure. Just trying to Sure, just trying to clarify for the case, right? It's not sort of, the test isn't, is it a good project or a bad project? It is sort of, here are the tests on the books, and Commissioner, you're absolutely right. Those are the tests we have to compare the project to.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would like to just provide some additional information and the perspective, maybe?
Sure, go ahead.
I think as Mr. Stoddard indicated, this site has been basically looking at, at both the comp plan and the small airplane level, and then those plans specifically called for the site as a, you know, redevelopment site. And then they asked for specifically symbol on the, you know, both comp plan and the small airplane, that this one should be developed to the highest density as possible. And then, as stated in the staff report, this site basically is landlocked. On the page, sorry, on the line, I think it's seventy, there is a table, yeah, actually seventy, site profile, if you can take a look at the adjacent property, that's the hotel property, which basically landlocked this site on both sides. And then that property was developed quite recently, two thousand and thirteen. So most likely, there is no opportunity to consolidate any lot at all.
Right.
I mean, that's it. There's two, there's two parcel standalone.
It's kind of an orphaned parcel.
Yeah, they basically cut off on the rest. Regardless what you try to do, I mean, if, if they want to develop something, they don't have any other opportunity to consolidate more sites. I mean, that's just reality. And then, but don't forget, this is a one-third of an acre, I mean. For example, I heard a lot of discussion about, you know, how the car will be coming and out. Basically, if there is a driveway or parking, you know, driveway less than a hundred and fifty feet, we don't even ask for a hammerhead. Basically, they just come in and out because the traffic is not that much. This is the one thing I need to provide. It's a different perspective, it's, they basically fit into everything called by the master plan, comp plan, sorry, comp plan and small airplane. The other thing about the existing trees, yeah, when I first looked at the site, well, I saw this mature shade trees, and then I said, "No, you need to give us more setback, you know, you need to sit back from the property line at least fifteen feet to meet the requirement. In that way, we may want to save at least from the park side, I mean, Park Avenue." Those mature trees, I had a two-session with our arborist. They say, "Well, no way we can save it." So that means they need to provide more shade tree, that's why I did, we didn't call for more open space because the site is so small, but we do need to have a shade. Regarding the frontage of the Park Avenue, we have a streetscape standards, city adopted as a policy. I think that plan calls for, I think it's on the site, on the, excuse me, the staff report, basically on line two hundred and forty-four to two hundred and fifty, this street, basically Park Avenue identifying or designated as a civic grid street, which, you know, has a cross-section of sixteen-foot, you know, cross-section of being designated. I think this applicant, after, I mean, they have a recent submission as early as yesterday, and then some came in today, they basically tried to meet that sixteen, you know, foot And then that cross-section has three components, okay? One is the weeds, and then is the composition of the weeds, what's inside those sixteen feet. They basically follow a four-feet, six-feet, and six-feet, you know, composition, basically divided the sixteen feet. They pretty much meet those exactly cross-section recall by our streetscape design standards. And this site is very small, it's already in a very established neighborhood. They have this sidewalk on both sides, basically follow our streetscape, you know, standards. They're going to put in a brick sidewalk on both sides, so, and then that sidewalk will connect it directly to the other, you know, pedestrian system of the established neighborhood. Well, I don't see anything will be able to build additional, you know, pedestrian because they're already in the neighborhood. Some people maybe just cross the street to send their kids to this daycare. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm still learning, but from my perspective, this site is very unique. And then also in the city, we have a corner law to have a, subject to two front yard. That's the things new to me. So this, this put additional, you know, basically, not the burden, but the restriction on them. I think the new state variance standards, basically they changed from the hardship, which is very, you know, abstract concept, to a very, maybe more realistic standards, like unreasonably restrictive test, from the hardship test to the unreasonably restrictive test. And then I think that, basically the site is very small to start with, and then with those requirement, they will have a lot of hurdles to get over. So that's the, something I will try to bring the attention of the commission to look, you know, from this perspective on this project. Thank you.
But it's a conforming site, just, just so, I mean, it may be a small conforming site. What's the minimum lot area in T1?
There is no required minimum lot size.
This is very small already.
Seventy-five hundred square feet or something, isn't there for?
That's only if you develop with the R1B standards, so there's no required lot width or depth or acreage.
In T1?
Correct.
You can just subdivide a T1 lot into an infinite number of lots?
Yeah, the only thing that would control it is, is obviously its subdivision, you have to subdivide to a, a sort of what would be a reasonable use of the property. So that's the, you can't, you can't subdivide out a postage stamp.
Okay. So then how do we know it's small, then? So then it's not small, it's just, there is no, there is no minimum size, so how can we compare it? I mean, compared to other T1 lots, it's kind of similar, I would argue. Anyhow, I, I mean, I work with variance law day in and day out, all day long, so I will tell you that while the 2015 change in the code did remove the hardship approaching confiscation language, which was previously in there, after the Cochran v Board of Zoning Appeals of Fairfax County decision in two thousand and six, the General Assembly did make some changes over the years, they've made several changes, showing that you have an unreasonable restriction on the use of your property is still a high burden to meet. Unreasonable restriction would mean that the ordinance, as strictly applied, is not allowing you a reasonable use of your property. I would argue that having two law offices could be a reasonable use of the property. Having a daycare with seventy-five children might be a reasonable use of the property. The point is, it's fairly debatable. So all I would say is that we have to deal with the ordinance that we have, that's adopted by the city council. There are aspects of our ordinance that are out of date, perhaps, there are aspects of our ordinance that people don't like, there are aspects that need maybe to be revisited and updated, but none of those are justifications to say, "Oh, I just prefer not to follow it because I don't like it, or I think it's stupid, or I think the ordinance is out of date." That's true, but there's a different way to go about that, and saying, "I need a variance because my out-of-date ordinance is, is a hardship," well, you have to meet that, you still have to meet that test independent of that. So I would just caution staff to look critically at that and understand that because it's, that's, that's what the code says. So anyhow, I don't want to belabor that point, but the point is, is that I just think, even besides all that, I think it's a lot to put on a site that, of that size. I think it's a very intense proposal on a site that, as you said, is only a third of an acre. Knowing how active, you know, daycare sites can be as far as like pickup and drop-off, they're fairly busy during those times. I mean, it is spread out during the peak hour and also during the P, you know, AM and PM, but anyhow. I mean, are all the parking spaces meeting the dimensions? I mean, I see that there are columns, you know, if the parking spaces are awkward or difficult to use, people won't use them. There are other projects in the city where that's occurred, and so I see there are columns in the way, you know, and other things that are, you know, kind of going on in the spaces that are provided, so that it, you know, it may wind up being a lot that's somewhat awkward, and people say, "Well, I'll just park on the street," and it winds up, you know, again, causing a detriment to the neighborhood. So anyhow, there's multiple things going on. There are also design issues with the, you talked about the, you know, it's meeting our plans, but there's not even, there's not even a front door on the project. I mean, it's completely turning its back on the neighborhood. There's like two, looks like, kind of like, emergency exit doors on Oak Street, there's no door on Park. I mean, I think it just, just forgetting all the other things I just said, I think it presents, just the, just the design of the structure is, you know, kind of, I think, at odds with, I think, what we would want to see a redevelopment of the T-zones be, even under the current standards, under the current plan, under the current ordinance. Forget the stuff we're trying to dream about in the future with the change, even today. I just think the design of that building would, would not be the kind of precedent we would want to set. Not that the use is bad, I think the use is good. A daycare could be great there, that corner, but I think it has to be designed in a way that is compatible and is at a level of intensity and scale that fits with the constraints that are there. You know, not every use, as I said at the beginning, not every use at every level of intensity can fit on every lot in the city. Just can't happen. You know, sometimes people want to do something on a lot, and it just is too much, the proverbial twenty pounds of stuff in a ten-pound bag. And sometimes, I'm not saying that's necessarily the case here, but, you know, I want to see revisions and see what, as it evolves, you know, this is just a work session, but anyhow, that's my, that's kind of, I think, what I want to stress to staff, that someone comes in with a proposal, and staff should look at it critically, not just say, "Well, someone wants to do this, and so, okay." You know, yeah, of course, I understand the motivation to want to do things at a certain level, there's financing, there's business side of all this, and that's, that's fine, that's capitalism, that's great. But we still have to look critically at it and make sure it works. So I don't have a preconceived number in my head, I don't know if anyone on the commission does about what would work, but it just has to work, and I'm not sure it's working like this.
Commissioner Comant, I can't see whether you have a hand up. Did you have any comments or questions that you wanted to ask?
I do, thank you for calling on me. I do want to, I guess, third or fourth, the comment about an entrance on Park Avenue. That was something that I noticed when I was reviewing it. I, I agree with Mr. Hira that we really do, and Mr. Puentes, and everybody else who said it, that we really do want to have some activity on Park Avenue. I agree that daycare is a really urgent need in Falls Church City. I would expect and hope that many local residents will make use of a daycare if, if one is added here. I was curious if staff looked at parking for other daycares that are in the city. I know we have one that actually is just a few blocks away from this location on Virginia Avenue across from the library. I'm not sure what the enrollment for that daycare is, or how many spaces they have. It is a very small site, I think there are other uses in the building that they occupy. I would just be curious to know how, how much parking they have and whether it's adequate. I see parents parking on, on Virginia Avenue often at drop-off and pickup times. It doesn't seem to be a hugely disruptive thing that's happening. It's true that, you know, that, that activity is really spread out over the course of two or so hours, both in the morning and in the afternoon, and it does not sound like will be conflicting with the schools, at least in the afternoon. So I'm, I'm less worried about that. I'm, I'm also really happy to see the shared parking with the Hilton Garden Inn next door. Actually, kind of wondering if you could expand on that, so, you know, maybe more of the parking for this could be located in that, in that building, or in that existing structure. And I think, I think that's everything that I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other final comments or questions or observations before we close this out? Looks like we are done. We'll thank you, everybody, for your input, and we'll see what happens. Thank you. Let's move on to our last item, the information items. First, there are planning commissioner reports. Are there any reports from planning commissioners? I'll just say that I did attend the internodal ribbon-cutting today with various noteworthy officials from all levels of government there. I thought it was a pretty interesting display of unity between Fairfax County, the city, federal, state. So it's good, finally, after ten, ten-plus years, that that project had a ribbon-cutting today. Where Hillwood Branches off from South Washington, that new park, it's got a bench there, it's got history, very interesting history murals, definitely worth a walk down there to, to read those. But I think it's mainly just a place where you can catch a bus and hopefully a scooter or some other form of transportation other than a car and connect to other parts of the city. Anything else in terms of planning commissioner issues? Okay, I think, Paul, we can go on to your report.
Sure.
Can I just make one?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, the, just to note that there is a, a meeting tomorrow at Meridian for the Community Energy Plan, and it's a public event, it's from seven to nine, to engage in activities to learn about climate change and what the city is already doing, I don't know if there's any more context there, Tim, but it's a good public forum for folks to learn more and contribute on our CCME.
Indeed, I would second that. It'll be kind of an informal, you know, there's not going to be a speaker, central speaker, it's just, there's going to be staff and consultants and so forth there to discuss ideas, concerns, issues that our citizens have as the city works on developing a community energy plan. So. All right, seeing no other comments, Mr. Stoddard, I believe, the next thing is your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Just to flag, it is ten thirty. Do you want to continue meeting for ten minutes, fifteen minutes?
Sorry, you got the hook.
We'll give you, we'll give Paul a ten minutes.
Yeah, someone would like to.
The least we could do.
Make a motion for maybe a twenty-minute extension?
Twenty, all right, fine. I'll move, we'll give Paul twenty minutes for his report, but he, but he won't need all twenty minutes because he's so good.
I hope not.
He won't even need it.
Well, he doesn't use, he doesn't have to use it all, we'll just give it to him.
Okay.
I appreciate the flexibility.
Twenty minutes, so till ten fifty-three.
Is there a second? All right, all in papers say aye. All right, it's all yours.
All right. So I'll, oh, gosh, thank you. Let's see, I'll walk through some of the items in the director's report here, and then I'll do the look ahead on the agenda. Actually, Jack, I'm going to stay on the attachments. So first update is just an update on the West Falls project. For anyone who hasn't seen this before, I try to share this, this is a Cameron Garrus creation, the West Falls wall print. It is, it is scaled out to measure, to, to print out at twenty-four by thirty-six, you can obviously scale it down and print it smaller, but it is a rundown of the approved buildings on the site, as well as the, the approved programming, prospective renderings, as well as the expected opening dates. So if anyone on the commission wants a run of this thing off our plotter, let me know. I keep one outside my office door. And then the second attachment was just an update provided at the recent community meeting, providing updates on the status of construction of the various buildings on the site. For anyone who hasn't been out recently, there is a tremendous amount of progress as, as many of the buildings go up simultaneous, simultaneously. It's exciting and, and a little dusty. Let's see, grant applications. Here, I'll work off the director's report, just a few things to update you on. One, in your role of overviewing the, overseeing the CIP, the, the recorded CIP video is up on the city website, the web link is there. Also, in your review of overseeing the, the planning department's operating budget, our department budget proposal is also up, if you go to the city council, if you go to the city's website for budget, you can find your way to a web link to all of the department budget videos, so you can see ours, Public Works, Housing, and of course, the other departments in the city. Let's see, keeping you up to date on grant applications and CIP projects, there was a grant application submitted to repair failing signal equipment at the intersection of Hillwood and Roosevelt, that grant application is attached, and then also.
By the way, is, I'm just curious whether there's, anyone has looked at the possibility of a roundabout there? I know the state has passed some improved, improved design options on roundabouts, and it would be good, at, at least if somebody with a lot more knowledge than me could look at that intersection and see if. that intersection and see if a roundabout could possibly fit in there.
We can look at that. I think, yeah, I think what we would probably do is just some quick fit tests of, of looking at a couple other roundabout designs in the, in the area that have been successful, especially smaller ones. I've seen actually Fairfax County piloting some of these.
Fairfax has done several in the Annandale area.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. We can look at a test fit of what that would look like. Oh, Park Avenue Great Streets, I know this is of interest to the commission, so wanted to include these. The 60% plans are available. They're attached to the director's report. I'm happy to walk through them if you all like, or answer any questions that you may have on those. I wasn't planning to do a presentation, but I certainly could if you all wanted it. East End Small Area Plan, an update on community engagement. The last pop-up, the fourth pop-up is scheduled for this Saturday. Of course, we held three pop-ups previously. Now this fourth pop-up is the reflection back to the community of, here are the key things that we heard from, from folks who, who we engaged with during those pop-ups, and we want to reflect that back and make sure we heard it right. And then the next time the commission would see, the effort is with a revised draft plan that's scheduled for May 3rd work session, so two weeks from today. From there, it would then go to council for a work session on the same materials.
Paul, can I just jump in real quick?
Yeah.
It'll just be really brief.
Sure.
Some of the activists at the Eden Center have contacted me. I've been engaged with them. I just want to let everybody know. They've attended some of the pop-ups. And I would just say, one of the things that I didn't see on your bullet points, it, the last one is just ensure the Eden Center remains. I think the sentiments of that are probably like anti-displacement, right? Like, so the Eden Center could be there, but all those businesses could be gone. I know that's a main concern, and we talked about having anti-small business displacement strategies in our revised plan. So I just want to underscore that. You said you got two weeks to work on it. Please, when you bring that back to us, make sure there are anti, I know you've talked to the people at Maryland about anti-displacement, but that needs to be in our plan. And also, I know the community has vocalized that, so we need to say we heard that and reflect that back to them.
Absolutely.
But I have heard, just to give staff compliments, and actually, I've heard from some folks about how, about those pop-ups, and so, I think you guys are doing a great job, I mean, you know, having multiple pop-ups. I mean, I think, I've heard some positive feedback, you know, from folks about that, you know? I think it's been picked up, as Derek knows, in the local press and other things, and, you know, so I know.
I attended two of them.
Right, so, so good job on staff for doing that. I know, you know, I know you guys always, from the beginning, sort of, you know, wanted to do as much outreach as you could, and so I never felt like you guys made a conscious decision not to go there. So, but now you're certainly showing that, you know, you know, by going there multiple times, and I think it's been well-received by the folks there, and you've gotten good feedback. So congrats to staff on that. I think you guys are doing a good job, reaching out to that part of our community who sometimes doesn't, you know, come out to our meetings. Of course, they did on that night, you know, here, but, but still, I think you guys are hearing voices that you might not otherwise have heard, so it's, it's a great thing what you're doing. I think it's going to help us inform, ultimately inform a better product at the end.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, you know, a more inclusive plan is always a better plan, and I think, and hopefully you all will agree when you see the revised draft in a couple of weeks, but really that idea of, what did we hear from the, right? Because now we've been working off the same draft for several months now, so really it is, what did we hear from the boards and commissions? What did we hear from council? What did we hear from the community at the Eden Center? What did we hear from the policy experts regarding anti-displacement? And how do we bring that all back? Because remember, we weren't starting from scratch. We did have, obviously, you're not starting from scratch from what's there, right? The vibrant community that's there, and you want to preserve that and maintain that long-term. But of course, even when we started the public engagement with those pop-ups, we already had a vision statement that had been worked through the council, the planning commission, many of the boards and commissions as well. So really, it's looking at, how do we get a plan that builds on all of that? And hopefully, you all will agree that we did a good job. But obviously, that's why we bring it back to you, so that we can make it better. So that's the East End Small Area Plan. Also attached is the Planning and Zoning Quarterly Update. We produce these on a quarterly basis, once every three months, and it catalogs the work we've been doing over the last three months, the level of public engagement, advancing projects on a range of efforts, and of course, charting out what we expect to happen over the next three months or three months plus, depending on project schedules. Then I want to jump, if, I'm sorry, if there are no questions on that?
Well, I did have just one comment on the 60% plans for Park Avenue. I don't really have a question on it, but there were certainly a lot of questions and concerns coming from the CACT and the ESC, so hopefully somebody has forwarded to them, rather than relying on people just to come and look at our agenda to find that, if that could actually be shared with, especially those committees, I think that would be, would be a good thing.
Correct. There was a, well, I was given 20 minutes. I won't use all of them. If we can actually just go to the, they're attached, I think, the 60% plans. There was a small meeting with city manager, a couple of council members, a couple of CACT members, a couple ESC members, to walk through what was in the plans. And some of this was talking through, what was the history? What got us here? How did we land on this set of plans, right? These didn't just sort of fall from the, from the sky. Someone spent a lot of money on these things. But if you go actually to the, so this is obviously the geographic limits of the plan, and then if you go to the second page, this is actually the second sheet in the, in the plan book, and this is a map, as soon as it renders, it's high-resolution. But this is a map showing how this project compare, is situated to the rest of the parks throughout the city, and that's on purpose. It was in the 2014 Mobility for All Modes Plan, where Park Avenue, Maple Avenue, Broad, Washington, and the W and O D were flagged as being the city's great streets. These places where community happens, where sort of people, land uses, design, all come together. These are the things that people know and love about the city of Falls Church. That idea was then further refined when we went through the Parks for People Plan, and it really talked about the parks as green spaces throughout the city, and it started to flag those same great streets as being these greenways, these connectors of the city parks. This, this building on this sort of classic idea of park design, that people should be able to move throughout the entire city while always being in a green space. So on this map, if you could imagine Maple Avenue, Park Avenue, Washington, Broad, and of course, the W and O D, all becoming these wonderful tree-lined streets that, in some places, they already are, but in all places they deserve to be, it really would be this wonderful connected green network throughout the entire city. And so that was the, that was the vision that got this project started. It was the special study that you all saw back in 2015. I know membership has changed a little bit since then, but back in 2015, when Heather Scharfitter presented her report on what Park Avenue could be to become a great street, and really to model it off the design from other places that had award-winning designs, whether because they were recognized by the American Planning Association for the Urban Design, or places like Budget Travelers, America's coolest small towns. What are the places people want to be? Let's try to figure out what they did and, and copy the stuff that works for Falls Church here. And so really, it was this idea of this walkable green street, and that's what set the tone for the grant applications, the preliminary designs, and of course, at this point, we have awarded grant funds based on a specific design that's what we presented. And so obviously, you're always trying to make the design better, but it was that original design that's trying to be carried forward. And so that was the genesis for the plan. And I'm not going to go through all the plan sheets, but I'll just go through one or two as an example. If we go to the next sheet, I think it should be the cross-section immediately adjacent to the library. What I did do in this attachment is I actually pulled forward some of the landscaping plans. I know a lot of people have been talking about the parking lanes. I've been talking about them, it's the tree lanes. You can see it here, I think, across the entire three blocks, we end up adding something like 30-something street trees into the, into the corridor as a result of this. But largely, the way we did that is by bumping out the curb line into the parking space. So you can see the intersection of Virginia and Park tightening that up so that it's just the travel lanes. As it goes through the intersection, what you've got then is, is space for new trees throughout the corridor, and that pattern continues. Where we hit driveways and you wouldn't want parking anyway, we use that space to add street trees. We use it to add bike parking. We use it to add benches. It's, it's those community gathering spots along the way. I think the next sheet is just going to show details of what a planting strip goes like. If you can go down, yeah, so this is a detailed sheet of what the, the planting plans will look like as those bumpouts go out into the, into what is today the parking lane. And then if we just go one more sheet, it'll just give another example of how we sort of reimagined what, oh, I'm sorry, this is the intersection at the library again, this idea of really tightening this up. This is the entrance to the city civic, civic center with the library, Cherry Hill Park, the farmhouse, City Hall, Gage House. One more sheet, and, ugh, more detailed sheets. Let's go one, oh, yeah, if I could just get to the next street section. Here we go. So this is another one. So this is, it's approaching the corner with City Hall at Little Falls, and as soon as the render comes up, again, you'll see this idea of, of tree spaces really taking over a lot of today, what are parking lanes. I think we ended up with no net loss of parking spaces, but I think a much better use of that space in terms of adding greenery and adding to pedestrian comfort. And of course, as part of this, we underground all the utilities, so these same streets today, when you walk them, you'll notice that there are poles and guy wires in just about all of them. So it's certainly not ADA compliant, and so that's one of the things we did, is we were able to open up those sidewalks, make them safe for people to walk side by side, to pass each other without fear of walking into a pole doing it. And so that really was the vision, and that's what these plans were trying to deliver. But certainly, as part of that small meeting, what we did here is, generally, what we heard is, wow, we really like the green space, we really like this project, we really wanted to go forward. We also really want to talk about, in future projects, how do we fold in better bike facilities right from the beginning? Let's see, that's Park Avenue. I am down to four minutes now, so I will jump to the look ahead, because I know there are a couple things of interest to the group. If we can go pull up the agenda. I did end up using the 20 minutes. Sorry. Oh, interesting. All right, I'll work off my copy here. So last, the fourth of the Eden Center pop-ups is this Saturday on April 22nd. Next Monday, there is scheduled, council's going to have a scheduled work zone, a work session on the, on the proposed T-zone code, so that'll be a scheduled work session with council. They'll provide, and obviously, that, that work session is staff's revised proposal. We shared a lot of it at the Public Town Hall that was recently. We revised it further based on public comment we've received since then. So we'll share that with the council as, as a draft proposal in that familiar table format, as well as the actual draft zoning text. The next time council will see that is actually May 22nd. You can see it's a busy night for planning on the May 22nd council meeting night. We'll be taking the, the T-zone code then. It's tentatively scheduled for consideration for a new first reading on May 22nd. So T-zones, April 24th work session, May 22nd first reading. In between those two dates, I've actually penciled it in to hold a work session with, with you all on that proposed T-zone code on May 3rd, so two weeks from today. Also on your schedule, I mentioned this earlier, two weeks from today, the East End Small Area Plan. And then I mentioned the busy night on May 22nd with council for planning items. They'll be seeing the same East End Small Area Plan materials you all are seeing in two weeks. Mr. Chair, you're scheduled to provide your annual report to the council. The commission had approved the report several months ago, and, and we were able to get a date to present it. And then the other thing.
That's May 22nd for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the other thing that's there, the third bullet point, this is something you all had seen previously as part of a director's report, and I'm happy to bring it back to you all in the interim. But it is taking through a variety of cleanups on the city zoning code. Some of it is old terminology, the comprehensive sign packages, and other things that, that should be in there, but, but never had a chance to get in. There we go. And that's, I think that walks us through May, which is probably far enough. I'm happy to take any questions.
Are we done? Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. Thank you, everyone.